Okay folks, welcome to the city council meeting of Tuesday February the 8th. We're going to start off by going in camera and then we will resume back upstairs here on our and continue our regular meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to go in camera right now. Motion by Councilor Strange, second by Councilor Carrillo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimous. So please reminder, leave your electronic devices here with the sergeant-at-arms. Bring your yellow agenda with you and we'll meet downstairs in committee room two. Afterward, we'll resume back up here in council chambers.
Okay folks, welcome to the city council meeting of Tuesday February the 8th. We're going to start off by going in camera and then we will resume back upstairs here on our and continue our regular meeting. So I'm looking for a motion to go in camera right now. Motion by Councilor Strange, second by Councilor Carrillo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimous. So please reminder, leave your electronic devices here with the sergeant-at-arms. Bring your yellow agenda with you and we'll meet downstairs in committee room two. Afterward, we'll resume back up here in council chambers.
Okay, folks, we are going to get started and resume our city council meeting of Tuesday, February the 8th, 2022. It's just after 5:00 PM. We're just resuming from meeting downstairs in camera in committee room two, and we're ready now to resume with the regularly scheduled city council meeting. So first off, we'll call the order and we'll start with the performance of Oh Canada. Let me read this first, and then we could stand during the singing of Oh Canada. Tonight, the singing will be done by Kristin Patterson. Kristin is a resident of Chipewa, born and raised. She performs the National Anthem at her Remembrance Day ceremonies each year. She's married, she has two daughters, she works at Morse &amp; Son Funeral Home as a funeral director and has been there for 19 years. She's been singing since the age of four, and it's evident in her rendition of our National Anthem, she's quite talented. So if you'd please join me in standing while we listen to Kristin sing Oh Canada.
(singing) Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on a guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on a guard for thee.[1393.69][1393.69](applause)
Well done, Kristin. And I know all of council who've been to the Remembrance Day ceremonies know every year what a great job she does, both the regular one for the city and the one that she does in Chipewa. And she typically does both of them. So well done. Thank you very, very much. Moving on, we're now going to do our land acknowledgement. And tonight, we've got a recorded acknowledgement from Brian Kahn, who's a local artist and of Métis descent. He's an advocate, strong voice in the Indigenous community. He'll share his testimonies to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous peoples who are stewards of this land for millennia before us. Mr. Clerk, if we could play the recording, please.
(speaking Niagara) Brian Kahn, noticia kashan, Niagara Falls, New Wiccan. (speaking Niagara dialect) So hello, greetings to all. My name is Brian Kahn. I live in Niagara Falls, but my ancestors, they come from the north, from the far north. They are the Musquee, and I am Métis. So I'm going to start the meeting today with what is known as a traditional opening. And we don't know what your day was like as everyone gathers here in the meeting. Somebody may have had a fight with a spouse member, or someone may have cut them off as they were driving to the meeting. So if we all come together in a good way, in a good mind, and think of all the great gifts that have been given to us by the Creator. So with that, I call to Kissimmee, the Great Spirit, the Creator. And we are thankful to Him for all the gifts that He has given to us. And the greatest of those gifts is the gift of Mother Earth. And through her, we are given additional gifts, plants and medicines that grow from the ground. And we are grateful to each and every one of them, for they nourish us and they heal us as we continue through our journey. We are grateful to the Tree Nation, because the Tree Nation, trees stand tall and proud, and they provide us with the materials to make our homes. Traditionally, they provided the materials to build our fires for staying warm and for our ceremonies. The trees and the forests and the lands are also a place for all the two-legged, the four-legged, the swimmers, the crawlers, the flyers. And we are grateful to each and every one of them. And when I think of all of those gifts that the Creator's given to us for us to use, we must be reminded that as we come across an item that we want to harvest, that we don't take the very first one that we see, whether it's a plant or an animal. We don't even take the second one that we see. It's not until we find the third that we realize that there is enough for those who follow behind us, whether it's those who followed the next day, or those who follow for generations to come. And those are the teachings of my ancestors. We are grateful for the four winds that blow and the four directions that surround us. With that, that brings the change of season and new opportunities. At this time, it is a time of harvesting of those plants. And with that, we take one of the sacred medicines, tobacco, and we lay it on the ground as a gift to Mother Earth for giving us that opportunity to grow and nourish that plant or that medicine, which ultimately comes back to us. So we're grateful for that harvest that we have. Living in Niagara, we're surrounded by water, and the water is so important. It makes up a good part of our body. And it also provides us with refreshment throughout the day. But more importantly, it is through water that we have our very first homes. Before we were born, we lived within water, within our mothers. So we're grateful to that water. I look to the sky and I see Brother Sun, he's out there, and he provides us with light and warmth, whether he's shining bright or whether hidden behind the clouds, he's there and we know he's there, and we are grateful to him. At the night skies, Grandmother Moon, she shines high and strong and bright. And we are grateful for the gifts that she brings to us. But with that, we are grateful how she influences our bodies and influences the waterways so that through Grandmother Moon, through the water, and through the women of our nations, that our future generations are born, we are grateful. And finally, I look to the night sky, and I see the stars that are up there. And I am told that those stars are our ancestors. They're watching over us, they're guiding us, they're leading us along our journey. And so with that, I will say hi, hi. Thank you, merci, merci, language.
Okay, thank you very much to Brian Kahn for the land acknowledgement. Now, we're looking for an adoption of the minutes from our January 18th and 25th meetings. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will adopt them. I just have one correction or an addition on the January 18th. Under the present section, there's notations if we were on Zoom, and I was on Zoom that night, and it doesn't say that on the minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, you've got that? Okay, great. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay, okay. Seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, the minutes are unanimously approved. Thank you for that. Disclosures of a peculiar interest, Counselor Cario, and then LaCoco, and then Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Your Worship. Declare conflict on 7.4 MW 2022-10. Sidewalk cafes on Fallsview Boulevard and Victoria Avenue. I have a property on each street.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will declare a conflict on 7.1, the draft consolidated financial statements, just for the notation of the Downtown Business Improvement Association, my spouse's former employer, but I will be discussing it in whole.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Under 9.2, the Niagara region correspondence, the new Niagara official plan in regards specifically to the settlement area boundary review. My family owns land that's identified in this section of the plan, and I'll leave this here for the clerk.
Okay, thank you for that. And reminder, everyone to hand in your declarations of conflict of interest, peculiar interest. Counselor Dobrowski?
Item number, under the consent agenda, 8.4 RNC 2022-01, my employer's Revel. And the, Bill, are we okay to email that, or do we have to put it in writing as well?
Email's fine.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we can move along. Okay, seeing none, we can move along to the mayor's reports and announcements. They are fairly brief tonight. First thing, we start off with obituaries, condolences. Ken Jiggins, the father of Tony Lynn Perrier, a retired city employee, passed away. Donna Bajniewski, sister-in-law of Dale Morton, member of our senior staff team at the city. Our condolences go to the families. We've got some birthdays between city council and senior staff. Sam Valeo, our CBO, his birthday is this coming Sunday, February the thirteenth, so congratulations, Sam, in advance. And of course, as romantic as it gets, with a birthday on Valentine's Day is our city clerk, Bill Mattson. Yeah, did you want to say something to that, Mr. Mattson?
I just appreciate you decorating chambers for my birthday. Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's the least we could do. Well, now you know. And also Dale Morton, who has a birthday Wednesday, February the sixteenth. So we've got a number of Valentine's Week birthdays, so congratulations and best wishes to all. I'd like to start off by acknowledging our newest member of senior staff, Nadee Panyarthy, who is our new solicitor, who joins us from the city of Brampton. And Nadee, we'd like to welcome you to the team. We know that you're looking forward to be here, as much as we're looking forward to having you here. I know it's great that you've been able to step into the role that's been played by Ed Lustig, our ironically former solicitor and former C. A. O. And he probably forgot more than many of us will ever know, and we're very grateful for him stepping up and always taking care of his city. And, and Nadee, would you like to say a few words as we welcome you to the city as our newest solicitor?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm very happy to be here and happy to help the city in any way I can for my legal background, and really happy to be a part of this very collegial team. Thank you so much.
Well, welcome. Looking forward to working closely with you. And we know that she's proficient in both English and French, and as well as an experienced litigator and has municipal experience. So she's got a whole bunch of great tools that we're looking forward to having here at the city, so welcome. You're welcome. Moving along to talk about The Bachelor. So ABC's The Bachelor was filmed in Niagara Falls in October. It aired last night, and it'll also air next Monday, Valentine's Night, our city clerk's birthday. And there's upwards of four million people that'll be tuning in. And we'd like to, and I'd like to acknowledge Counsel Kerrio. Because a few years ago, when I was sick, Counsel Kerrio was our acting mayor, and he was in Las Vegas, and he met with the producers of The Bachelor, convinced them that Niagara Falls was the natural location for something like this. They got in touch with our teams down here. Next thing you know, here they are filming in Niagara Falls and going to be having a high moment on Valentine's Day in Niagara Falls, the honeymoon capital. It's all because of, what's that? Well, I don't know. Maybe we could ask him.
Well, Sineh actually phoned me from Bachelor. I can't, she's, no, no. I don't know if you saw it, but.
No, I heard. Yeah, I heard.
She's, she's, are they putting her in a barrel next?
I don't know. I just want to say publicly thank you to Counsel Kerrio for, even when he's traveling, he's got the city on his mind, and thank you for bringing this exposure notoriety. We really appreciate it. Counsel Kerrio?
Well, after all the jokes that you and the council made about me going to Las Vegas, I'm glad one paid off.
Well, you know what? That's called the grand slam in the bottom of the ninth with two out. I mean, that was a big one. And what a, what a time when we're coming out of COVID. What kind of great exposure to millions of people, and not just on TV, but it's in newspapers, on social media, a lot of pickups. So kudos to Counsel Kerrio for what he did there. Also, I'd like to thank Counsel Dubrowski for representing the city at the South Street Burger, and also joining me at the opening of Meltwich this past week. A couple of places with some great food and some great opportunities. Lot of neat food places opening up here in Niagara Falls. Like to acknowledge Cricket Championship, the Niagara Cricket Academy. Can hold up their trophy here for all to see. And no, this is not my trophy. This is the Niagara Cricket Academy. And they brought this by. They're very, very proud as they were victorious in the super elite. Let me read here. They won the Hamilton and District Cricket League Super Elite Title for two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. And it was an honor to present them with congratulations on behalf of the city. We wish them all the best in their competition for two thousand and twenty-two. And they wanted us to house this trophy for now. I mentioned some grand openings, so Portage Bakery celebrated their fiftieth anniversary. I think we've got a picture, and there is Ross Baroni on my left in the picture. And of course, he's been making our candidate celebration cake for many, many years. And there he was when it was still held at The Optimist. So thank you to Ross and to his family, fifty years in our community. And there's another picture of him and his family out front. As a matter of fact, CH did a fifteen-minute episode in there. And it's funny, because I had talked in CH about those super sandwiches they make. You know, they take a life slope, let's get the words out. A loaf of Italian bread, cut it in half, and one, make one big sandwich. And Tim Boland didn't, believe me, he had to go see it for himself, and he saw how massive the sandwich is. And there we are in there congratulating them, and they're all pretty excited. So congratulations, forty, fifty years, Portage Bakery in our community, and still servicing the community. As well, South Street Burger, we had the grand opening there, and I think there's a picture there from South Street Burger. They've got like thirty-five toppings, and they're going to be opening their ice cream store off to the one side as well. Franchise, this is their latest location. They did, that's it, they got some neat murals on the wall too of Niagara Falls. There it is, big mural on the, on the wall. They're very proud of being here in Niagara Falls. So thank you to South Street Burger for choosing Niagara Falls. We've got some great burger places in town now.
Mayor, they actually, they own the restaurant beside?
Yes, and they're, we're supposed to be doing a grand opening there in the next few weeks, I believe. I think it's a, is it a pita place, I think?
I think so.
Something like that, so that'll be next. And Meltwich, Counsel Dubrowski joined me there for that opening. And there we are with the proprietors, and they make some pretty amazing sandwiches, and their soup. I know Counsel Kerrio, you particularly enjoyed their tomato soup we had recently. So they are going to be, so do we have any updates for Family Day? Or are they still working on things, Counsel Dubrowski? Yep? Okay, great, fantastic. So Good Eats, and that's in the Town and Country Plaza, right by Shoppers Drug Mart. So it's a great place, perfect place with two high schools just a block away, good location. So happy to have some new businesses, and hopefully this is the sign of more great things to come. Last thing to speak about is Queen's Platinum Jubilee. So Sunday, this past Sunday, February the sixth, was a special day for the Queen. And what I'm hoping is council can, can give direction that we can come up with a way to honor her in some special ways in Niagara Falls, maybe potentially in partnership with the Niagara Parks Commission. June second has been named as the day for official celebrations. Queen Elizabeth the Second, she's been seventy years on the throne. She's ninety-five years old, the first ever British monarch to reach Platinum Jubilee. She was twenty-one when she took the throne. She's the longest reigning living monarch in the world. And maybe we can ask staff on our Rec and Culture Department to work with the Niagara Parks Commission on a special commemoration that maybe could include flag raising of the official Platinum Jubilee Flag at the Falls, Falls Illumination on June the second. And additionally, we'd like to suggest that maybe a Jubilee tree planting program. And maybe that would be a nice, long-lasting legacy for the Queen's Jubilee. So looking for a motion from council to give direction to staff to follow this up. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. Do we have any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimously approved. Thank you for that. And our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, March the first. And that ends the best part of the meeting. Moving along to planning matters, Mr., thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. So, Mr. Clerk, could you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw and a draft plan of vacant land condominium to permit the development of sixty-seven townhouse units at five six four six, five six seven eight, and five seven zero eight Dorchester Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the draft plan of vacant land condominium and the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan purpose, or sorry, process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal with regards to the zoning bylaw amendment only, shall give notice to the city clerk immediately after today's public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd now like to ask our planning director, Ms. Dolch, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed draft plan and zoning bylaw amendment, or Andrew Bryce, whichever one prefers to come on and do that. Mr. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to share my screen. Okay, Centennial Homes has submitted an application for a zoning bylaw amendment and a plan of vacant land condominium for lands known as fifty-six forty-six to fifty-seven oh eight Dorchester Road. Property is located on Dorchester Road, south of Highway four twenty and north of High Street. It consists of three single-detached lots. The, just illustrating the condominium plan, what is proposed is sixty-seven block townhouse dwelling units arranged around two private roads that come off of Dorchester Road. The property is one point seven hectares in area. The applicant is requesting the lands be rezoned a site-specific residential low-density group multiple-dwelling zone from its current residential one-B density zone to allow for the residential development. The site-specific regulations requested in the R. Four Zone are illustrated in this drawing, include a reduction in minimum lot area from two hundred and fifty square meters to two hundred and forty-seven square meters, a reduction in minimum privacy yards from seven point five meters to seven point four, seven, sorry, seven meters on the north, along the north and south property lines, as well as a reduction from seven point five meters to six meters for units that are internal to the development, so the units in the middle of the development. The, as, as what is expected with our zoning bylaw amendment and vacant land condominium applications. A neighborhood open house was held on October the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Ten residents were in attendance. The number of concerns were raised by the residents, including that they prefer the site to be developed as, as single-detached dwellings. The noted that the townhouse development is not compatible with the existing dwellings in the area. Noted that it represents an overdevelopment of the site. Concerns were raised about the traffic generated by the proposed development. In particular, it's a major concern during peak hours. Concerns were raised, there are quite a number of mature trees on the property, so concerns were raised about the removal of the mature trees. And there was note that, or a fear that it would impact the value of homes in the area. And finally, servicing was noted as a major concern as the infrastructure does not, or the opinion was that infrastructure did not have the capacity to service the proposed development. In the response, staff offered the following comments. Noted that the development of the lands for townhouses is permitted by provincial, regional, and city policies. That the proposed development conforms with a density range of twenty to forty units per hectare that is expected for a low-density residential areas such as the subject area. Noted that the change in zoning will facilitate the development of compatible forms of dwellings and allow for efficient use of urban and service land. And finally, the proposed development could be accommodated by the municipal water and sanitary infrastructure. In addition, it's noted that, that as a, as a separate sewer separation project, the construction of a new storm sewer and outlet will be completed. In addition, staff noted that as a condition of approval, retention of additional good-quality trees along the lot lines will be sought wherever possible, and large-caliper trees planted wherever possible where trees are removed. The, the, the mature trees cover the property, but there are quite a few in the middle, but there's also quite a few along the lot lines that abut the adjacent dwellings. So the, the trees in the middle will likely be removed as part of this development. But through the conditions of approval, the, the trees along the lot lines would be studied further to see if they could be retained wherever possible. And finally, a traffic consultant prepared a traffic brief that was reviewed by our Transportation Services section, determined that the existing network has sufficient capacity to accommodate the future site-generated traffic. Is noted that development would generate forty-one peak-hour trips, and both site-access intersections are expected to operate at acceptable level of service without any queuing concerns. Moving on to planning analysis, provincial policies. Provincial, the proposed development complies with provincial policies as follows. It's located in a walkable neighborhood with transit available to promote alternative means of transportation. It will add to the diversity of housing options for residents, and finally, will assist a city in meeting its forty percent intensification target within the built-up area. Official plan, the lands are subject, are designated residential. Official plan for residential designated lands permits detached dwellings and townhouses and other similar forms of housing catering to a wide range of households with a density of twenty to forty units per hectare. New housing forms are to be of a height massing and provide setbacks that are in character with the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed development complies as follows. Proposed townhouse development would provide an alternative housing choice in this neighborhood. Proposed height of the two-story townhouses is consistent with surrounding development, which consists of a mix of one- and two-story residential dwellings. Appropriate lot coverage, massing, and front, rear, and side yard setbacks will be provided in relation to abutting lands. Trees, fencing, and other landscaping will be used in the rear and side lot lines to buffer adjacent residences and also enhance the streetscape. And finally, the townhouses would be developed at a density of forty units per hectare. This conforms to the official plan. Zoning bylaw, the lands, the requested R. Four Zone would permit the proposed townhouses, except for the site-specific changes requested, and I'll go in those in a minute. The development complies with the R. Four Zone. This includes the building height of ten meters. I'd still like to note that the, the maximum building height of ten meters is also applicable to the surrounding lands that are zoned for single-detached dwellings. Specifically, the requested changes are a reduction in lot area from two hundred and fifty square meters to two hundred and forty-seven square meters, a reduction in the minimum front yard depth from six meters to five point five, and four point two for respectively the dwelling and for a covered porch. And finally, a reduction in minimum privacy yards from seven point five meters to seven meters along the north and south lot lines, and to six meters for dwelling units that are interior to the development and back to, back onto each other. Requested regulations can be supported for the following reasons. The reduced lot area per dwelling is a minor departure from current regulations. Essentially, it's three square meters per dwelling unit. Reduction in privacy yard is requested for interior units, and also units along a portion of the north and south lot lines only, and can be supported as extensive landscaping provides additional amenity area. And finally, it is, it is a minor reduction from the current standards for the, the, the units that are in the periphery of the site. And finally, a reduction in the front yard setback will be mitigated by extensive landscaping. Also like to note that the R. Four Zone permits low-rise apartment dwelling, dwellings. And to ensure compatibility with the neighboring properties as maintained, staff recommend the site-specific R. Four Zone prohibit apartment dwellings, limit the use to the proposed townhouse dwellings. Moving on to the condominium design and conditions of approval. The plan of condominium will accommodate the intended division of the land into vacant units of land that can be owned separately, and includes a private common area road and amenity and parking areas. And considering a proposed plan of condominium, council shall have regard to the planning matters listed under fifty-one, section fifty-one, twenty-four of the Planning Act. Many of these planning, these, these matters do cover, or kind of are covered by other, you know, forms of, or other planning mechanisms, like the official plan and zoning bylaw. But just to summarize how they comply with, with these matters, it's noted that. with, with these matters, it's noted that the development complies with provincial policies and the official plan. Also, the draft plan is not premature as the lands are designated and suitable for residential development as well. Services are available. The development is in the public interest as they facilitate the development of additional housing and new housing forms within the area. Adequate access will be provided from Dorchester Road. Each unit will be a available unit land and will provide sufficient space for the dwelling with front and rear amenity areas. It is adequately serviced by water, sanitary, and storm sewer, once, once that, through that sewer separation, that storm sewer is provided. School facilities are located nearby to serve the development. And finally, site plan matters and site works will be addressed through a condominium agreement that will be registered on title. In summary, the proposed development complies with provincial and regional policies, conforms with the city's official plan with respect to achieving intensification, and will contribute to a sufficient supply of housing. The proposed development is compatible with surrounding development in terms of building height and setbacks, and through conditions of approval, retention of the good quality trees along the lot lines and the planting of large caliber trees to screen abutting properties will be sought wherever possible. And just to summarize the recommendations, that council approved the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application, rezone the lands a site-specific R4 zone, that the plan of vacant land condominium be draft approved, subject to the recommended conditions, that the notice of decision include a statement that the public input has been received, considered, and has informed the decision of council, that the mayor and does, or doesn't be authorized to sign the draft plans as approved, provided no appeals of the decision have been lodged, that the draft approval will be granted for three years, and finally, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the condominium agreement, and any required documents to allow for the future registration of the condominium. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bryce. Do we have any questions or comments of council for Mr. Bryce? Yeah, Councilor Coco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a lot of questions and comments, but I think I'm going to wait until after that we see the other presentations, and then I might go back to Mr. Bryce if that's okay.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Land Tribunal dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed draft plan and bylaw amendment. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone that wishes to speak?
Yes, Your Worship, we do have five members of the public who have registered with the Clerk's office to speak to this matter. Some are, may be participating from the same residence, so they may summarize their, their points with one speaker, but we could start with the list that's provided there. Soon as IT gives us the go-ahead that they're connected.
Great, Ryan, Ryan is up, I believe. Ryan Schertzing? Okay, Ryan, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, great, we can hear you too. The, welcome to the meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I guess good evening, Mayor, city officials, and members of council. Thanks for letting me have an opportunity to make a presentation today. How do I share my screen?
Okay, well, our IT is going to do something to allow that? Okay.
Oh, that's great.
Okay, yep, we can see that, great.
Okay, perfect. So I just got a couple of slides here. I just want to use them like during my presentation. So, I mean, I didn't see this slide, I mean, in, in the presentation from Mr. Bryce, but I mean, this is a relevant slide because it just, it kind of really emphasizes the neighborhood. I'm sure everyone in this council meeting knows where this property is. I mean, we probably drive by it almost every day. It's been in the community for a very long time. Just to give everyone a history of the neighborhood, I mean, it's been around since 1925. My, my, I think my home and the houses between, just, just south of High Street, been here since 1925. 1940, they developed woodland and north of woodland, like High Street and such, so the houses in there are a little bit, a little bit newer. But regardless, these houses are all, all have unique character. They're, they were built in a time when care and quality were paramount. The residents of the area really take pride in their properties. Like, we enjoy having larger-than-average lots, mature landscapes, detached grasses, et cetera. So I guess we're a bit disappointed to hear that the builder wants to develop the land like a lot differently than its own, right? Presently, there's only three properties on the property. Residents aren't concerned with development of this land. Like, we know it's going to get developed. We just want it to be a little bit more balanced than it really is right now. Like, right now, this is just, they're cramming everything in there, right? This is an old estate lot, which only has three houses on it. I mean, you know, changing of this landscape without mitigating the effects of, of development will destroy the neighborhood. So I just want, my next slide here. So the other big concern we have as residents is, like, this, this, this area is where the current development is. The area I have indicated in red is another empty piece of land, which we know is going to be developed shortly thereafter, depending on the outcome of this development. Pinewood Homes apparently has, has bought out these two residents, and they own the church lands. So I guess, you know, what we're concerned about is not only this development, but what's going to happen to our whole neighborhood here. You know, we have the potential for, you know, 150 homes that could go in on these lands in the near future, right? So I guess residents fear that we're, we're going to lose the character and charm of the area. I mean, the other issue is that, you know, the housing isn't compatible with the area. All the houses are detached. They have big, healthy lots. I mean, you know, I, I feel more sorry for my neighbors on woodland and High Street. I'm not as impacted because I'm on Dorchester, but I mean, the traffic is, is really concerning. So when I look at this development, there's a lot of things that come to mind. The first thing is, like, is this proposal compatible? Does it blend in? Is it, is the developer being fair and reasonable? Were there other layouts considered, like, with detached? Will there be a compromise here? Or are they really just going to cram all these houses in, in a beautiful neighborhood? Does the development provide flow and function? I'll, I'll get into that a bit more about traffic, but I mean, if, if, if anyone's looked outside lately with the amount of snow, I don't even know where you'd be able to put snow in this, in this development. If, if, you know, if you had a snowstorm, where, where, where would people actually shovel the snow? There's nowhere to put it. Is the site environmentally friendly? Like, does the development preserve or provide new green space? It actually has the opposite effect. It has adverse effects to the mature trees in the area. What are the neighbors' comments about this? Are we happy with it? What came out of the public consultation? Well, I'll tell you. So on October 24th, prior to the open house, we actually spoke to all the residents in the area, the ones that are directly impacted of, on the development, on High Street, Leaming, and Woodland. We all feel that this proposal is in direct conflict with the surrounding neighborhood. The entire surrounding area is R1 detached with, with, as I mentioned, larger lots, mature trees. We feel that if the property was to, to be developed, we would prefer detached or maybe a mix of detached and towns with greater setbacks, and, you know, maybe keeping a bit more of the trees in the area. This two-story town style, I mean, I don't really know who it supports. It doesn't support affordable housing. It doesn't support the aging population. The aging population would prefer bungalows. So, next slide?
Mr. Schertzing, I just wanted to point out, I should have said when we started, each speaker has five minutes, and so we, we just, we gave you some grace there, but if, you can just keep that in mind.
No, I, I'm going as quickly as I can. I mean, like, this is a major impact here, so we do have a lot of things to talk. I mean, there's going to be other people that are going to speak as well, so I'll try to be as quick as I can, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So I just wanted to show you guys, this is the city's official plan here, and as you can see, it's all R1, okay? There's no R4 at all. So this is, this whole area, this site here is R1B. They're looking to change it to cram these houses in here. This is the streetscaping on Dorchester. As you can see, it's, it's beautiful. Like, there's, there's beautiful mature trees here. This proposal is actually looking at cutting down 177 mature trees with no mitigation. So how much time do I have left if, if you're saying only a five minutes?
Well, you know what? We, we gave you a little bit extra grace, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Why don't we say, why don't we say, if you can do, and wrap it up in the next three or four minutes?
Yeah, I'll probably, yeah, I'll probably be close to that. So, okay, thank you. So basically, this, this proposal that's been put forward does not have any landscaping buffers, okay? They're creeping close to the residents' yards, and basically, they're not leaving any trees for privacy and noise. As I mentioned, it's going to change the whole look and feel of Dorchester and this area of the city. It's going to be a complete, almost like Burlington, Toronto look, which, you know, personally, it gets away from the small-town feel, right? Infrastructure. This city has really old infrastructure. Combined sewers, I mean, I'm happy to hear that there's a, being a combined sewer proposed, but, you know, who's paying for? Are the taxpayers paying for it, or is the developer paying for it? Traffic. I just want to show this forward here. So I took this the other day. I mean, yeah, snow is a condition too, but I mean, this is a regular occurrence on Dorchester, okay? Like this, I live on the east side of the road, on the west side of the road. The people can't even get on their driveway most days. So this development will even cause more headache and, you know, dangerous for pedestrians going across the street and such. Parking, that development, there's hardly any parking in it. You're going to have overflow parking on, on private, private streets. I personally feel that the planner's report does not, does not mitigate any of the residents' concerns. I mean, there were several concerns, letters of, of opposition to this development. None of our questions have actually been answered. So I guess as far as this development's concerned, sorry, moving on. So here's the tree preservation plan, okay? The only trees that are planning to keep are a little bit on the north boundary here and a little bit on the, on the south boundary here. But basically, there's, they're looking at clear-cutting the whole thing. There's a lot of really beautiful trees here. If an alternative plan could really change things here. Like, if you, if you looked at a different layout, I mean, the layout they put forward isn't very environmentally friendly, okay? This is a view from woodland, looking at one in the residents' backyards. I mean, the residents on woodland are beside themselves because they have this beautiful, these beautiful trees behind their houses, and all of a sudden, they're just going to lose them all. I mean, there's got to be something that can be done to preserve this. I mean, those trees equate to about 8,500 pounds of carbon dioxide being removed from the atmosphere and provide oxygen to the area. I mean, developments are fine to be done, but they have to be done in, in a more sustainable and green way. Like, so here's an alternative approach here, okay? So you have a little bit less dense detached homes with townhouses, and, and on the perimeter, there's, there's tree protection that can provide a buffer zone between the residents. Also, an addition of a little park area for people, kids to play. There's none of this on, on the consult, on the applicant's proposal. Here's another layout with single detached with the same features. You have, you have a tree buffer. You have an individual park. Again, all I'm asking for is a little bit of compromise here. You know, there, there's been a lot of questions that have been asked, and like I said, the residents really aren't getting any answers. So with all things considered, I'd kindly ask city council to hear our concerns and deny this planning application as it has been submitted today. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Thank you. Next, I understand, we have Ronald, Ronald Gibberson? Is that right? Let me know, Mr. Oatley, when he's there. Is he there? Okay, okay. Judy or Ron Gibberson? Judy or Ron Gibberson? Can you hear us? You might be muted. You might need to unmute. We can't hear you.
Hello?
Oh, there we go. Hello, is this Judy?
Uh, no, this is actually another resident, but I am on, it's under her name for some reason, so I'm not sure why. So she might be trying to also access. This is Ruth and Stephen Andres. We're actually neighbors of Judy and Ron Gibberson.
Okay, do we have them on the list? No? Okay, we did have you on the list. Okay, so are, so do you know, is Ron and Judy, are they available?
They're on meeting. Yes, they are. Let me, perhaps I need to leave, and then they may be able to, maybe it'll switch to their, I don't know why, it's under her right now.
Wait, you know what? Let me just check with our IT. So does she need to do anything here, Mr. Oatley?
Did that unmute?
Oh, there's Judy.
There we go, okay, we're good.
Yeah, we should get it unmuted.
Okay, Ruth, I think maybe.
I will mute myself now. Thank you.
Okay, so is this Ron and Judy?
Ron, Ron and Judy Gibberson.
Okay, folks, and you've got five, five minutes, if you would. Try to zero, and if you can, if, I don't know if you heard Mr. Schertzing just speak. Hopefully, we'll try not to repeat what's already been brought forward, and then when the speakers are done, then we'll ask our planners to address some of the concerns.
I will do that, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, we hear you fine. Thank you, and welcome to the meeting.
So, thank you very much. I know many of you quite well. I've been a resident at this location, 6803 High Street, for 44 years. So I'm very familiar with the history of the zoning applications that have been rejected, and so on and so forth. So not to dwell on too many points here, I did send in a, a letter to all of you registering our objections on behalf of the residents, as well as I provided a very detailed report highlighting many concerns that we have. So briefly, Planning Act. So the Planning Act's formulated, as we all know, to protect public interest and allow developments that are compatible to surrounding neighbors. Okay, we definitely don't have that here. It's just a box that the planning department is checking. I am so disappointed in the open house. I sat through this. I talked to Joe Candelaro. I asked Joe, is there any compromise here? He said yes. We had no follow-up. The application just got submitted as laid out in the open house. I believe that there's room for discussion here. You know, of course, you know, we are looking at R1 zoning, single-family, or a blended mix, and I'll go into that a little bit later. Property plan, you know, I pointed this out. There's clearly to the north of my property, a 10-foot right-of-way running out to Dorchester Road. I believe it's city-owned, and it's in there for access between Woodlon, or Woodland and Dorchester. There's also Bell Canada easement, full length of the east side. None of this is shown on the plan. It definitely impacts the number of units that can be sighted. So we got to get, you know, the easements and right-of-ways straightened away. That'll determine what the buildable area is. So again, I pointed that out at the public meeting. It's fallen on deaf ears. Intensification, I, I understand the city's position, but, you know, this is not the right neighborhood to fight this battle. You know, I today went up to Kellogg Girwa Estates and looked around that area, similar to our neighborhood. There's lots of building going on in there. on in there. You know, off of Lucia Street, Cottonwood is in there. They're building somewhat, single-family. It's well laid out. Why not on our property to the north here? These townhomes are not low-income. Developers told us minimum 600,000-plus. You know, if you do the math and compare it to what we're proposing, you'll rec, you know, he'll realize significant financial gains, and he'll net more out of the development than what he's proposing here. It's just putting the effort in and having a good, solid plan. We beat the Dorchester Road combined sewers to death here. Both the city engineers, the developer, and all the other experts in this area have said, we are at capacity. We've denied development in this area already based on combined sewer capacities. You know, R.B. Anderson's proposed a storm sewer to drain the property after construction. It does not relieve the load on the storm sewer. There's a talk about an environmental study. We'll do the environmental study, determine what we have to do, what it's gonna cost, who's gonna pay for it, and you're talking, you know, a $5 million project here. I do this every friggin' day. Stormwater management, right now it's vacant land. It's like a sponge. Everything infiltrates into the soil. You build to the density that's shown on the plan, all that runoff has gotta go somewhere. You know, what's being proposed is a little diversion, you know, up Garden Street and emptying in the Hydro Canal. I don't think Hydro are very excited about contributions. You know, we deal with Hydro all the time. They're not interested in getting extraneous flows. Green space. This really is crucial to our neighborhood. You know, you're dealing with 1.7 hectares or 4.2 acres, quite sizable. You know, the Planning Department has said, oh, we'll take cash in lieu of green space. Hogwash. You know, there are no parklands in this area. None. So we're asking, forget the cash allowance, maintain the parkland. The parkland will protect the trees. How do we protect the trees? I was very impressed by your guest speaker. You know, Brian Kahn said, quote-unquote, "tree nation." You know, the Arbus Report here says, we've got great trees, lots of variety. They're going to cut down a maximum of 800, or 181 trees, and maybe reduce it to 177 trees. Incredible. If you read the Arbus Report, they talk about property line trees and trees on adjacent lands. I had to read this two or three times, because I couldn't believe such statements were being made. They want we neighbors to give up our trees so they can develop. Incredible. The city, you know, under Council La Cogu, has got a recommendation on tree preservation in the city. I don't know where that stands, but it's in the right direction. You know, Canada has signed the Paris Agreement to reduce carbon emissions as much as 50% by 2025. Cutting all those trees down is not going to assist.
Mr. Gibson, we're now, we're now at almost eight minutes.
Okay, I'm very sorry. The other, the other couple of things, one, there's a wildlife population back there, that, you know, when the trees get cut down, they go. You know, traffic. You know, R.B. Anderson's report, we've done pre-COVID, does not recognize a traffic flow out there. You know, we're asking if the study be redone, and they consider our points. Street lighting, the way the light, with the way the subdivisions laid out now, the lights shine directly into our high-street properties. A question's been asked by one of our neighbors, he can't get on here, Rick Hamilton, about historic significance. There's belief that these lands were used during the War of 1812. There's been no provision been made at all to address this issue. And most importantly, is Culinary's property to the north. It is much larger than this. If we take these two events, or these two areas in consideration, Dorchester Road just will not, not stand this kind of density. And lastly, we object to the architectural compatibility. You know, they're building barns. I've looked at the architectural drawings, they're disgusting. We want some kind of say in the architectural, we want to make sure it's compatible with what we have. So please consider our concerns. There's no need for intensification. Destruction of trees and wildlife is short-sighted planning to have 67 townhomes in such a small area. Let's provide direction to the developer to build to a standard that makes us all proud. Reject the application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And was Judy going to speak as well, or did you speak for both?
She's not going to speak. I took her five minutes.
Okay.
How's that?
All right, fair enough. That works out. Thank you for that. Thank you for that. Mr. Oatley, do we have, do we have?
The next person will be Rick Hamilton. They are online?
They are online? Okay. Mr. Hamilton, are you on the line? It's showing that you're on the line. I don't know if you're muted. We can't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, there you go. Okay, we hear you. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
So, so as we ask the other speakers, we ask you to try to respect the five-minute timeline, and if you can, to avoid what's already been said by the speakers before you. And the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks for hearing me. No, my concerns are the same as Ron's, and I just want to state that he's covered everything of my concerns, and that's about it. It's just, it's basically a concern of this neighborhood, and this is why we moved in here. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Is who?
Mercedes McLeod.
Oh, it's a new name, okay. Mercedes McLeod? Mercedes, Ms. McLeod, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we do. We can hear you fine. Could you, could you just state your address, please?
I'm at 5766 Dorchester Road.
Okay, thank you for that, and that's great. And as we've said to the last speakers, if you could, avoid repeating what's already been said, and we're asking everybody to try to do it within five minutes.
Definitely. I'll try my best.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, hello, council members in Niagara. My name is Mercedes. I'm accompanied here by my partner, John Zerphinitis, and like I said, we're residents of 5766 Dorchester Road. I just wanted to start off by saying, like Ryan had said, we're not against the development at all, because we know that that lot is beautiful, it's large, it has the potential to house many families. I'm here against the rezoning plan because of the same things that Ryan and Ron had created summarizing in our concerns. These are valid concerns, and I would seriously urge you guys to consider how harmful this development could be. With the pandemic and inflation, capitalizing on this development is inevitable, and it's, I, quite honestly, I find it a little bit selfish in terms of the amount of houses that are planning to be crammed in there. So John, John is a Niagara native, and I moved here from Toronto, so I know, like, how intensified developments can become. And honestly, we came here, I moved here to, you know, start a family with him, and I think that this project really jeopardizes and endangers that future that I have here or envisioned here. And so we first moved here in April, and I already saw the dangers firsthand of living on this very busy road. It was evident the first time I pulled into my driveway and was harassed by oncoming traffic and horns for simply trying to park at my own house. Traffic is going to be a serious issue, and I know you guys had done a study, but I don't really think that that's a true representation of what's actually going on here. We live here, and we see it every single day. And sometimes it takes me, honestly, 10 minutes to pull into my driveway coming off the highway at Frederica. Secondly, it's also a danger, because we can never get across the road safely. I see children, I see parents trying to cross the road for the bus that's parked on High Street, and it's a serious hazard. It makes me scared for, one, my future when we plan to have a family. Next, we have a bus stop that's right on Dorchester, before High Street that blocks our driveway when picking up and dropping off pedestrians. This also backs up the traffic coming from the south end. And additionally, I have people waiting in front of my house, and with this new development, you guys had mentioned that, you know, this provides a alternative transportation for these people that have the potential to live in these homes, and they're gonna be, you know, loitering right in front of my house, preventing me for, to get on my driveway like the bus has done many times. So I'm asking that you guys consider a plan for, you know, the road, Dorchester, possibly making it a one-way street from Frederica. Definitely would need, like, a crosswalk for testings and children for this new development, as well as us coming off High Street, and then to move the bus stop probably closer to, I'm hoping, where this development is going to be. My second concern, like they said, is the combined sewers and stormwater management. Third is that these townhomes are attractable for short-term leases and Airbnbs, seeing as it's central to the city and its perfect location for this type of dwelling, and it's not something that I want to see here. And I don't want to reiterate what Ryan has listed in his presentation, but we need to be heard, and as council, it's really your responsibility to ensure our health and safety of the residents that, one, already live here, and like, not looking to make a quick buck. We're standing up as neighbors and advocating for our lives, because this is our lives. As if COVID wasn't enough, this is definitely going to impact our lives for the next five to 10 years if one of this construction goes through, which it, like, I don't object to there being any construction, but this one, and like Ryan had said, the one adjacent to it, will definitely be developed within those, those years. So I urge you to seriously decline this amendment and demand that the developer work with the neighbors, so that everyone can walk away from this knowing that they were heard, our safety was considered, and the safety of the future homeowners there are also considered. I didn't move here to live in another city like Toronto. Niagara is special, and this would not contribute to that at all. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you very much for your time. Ms. Oatley? Oh, yep, Mr. Clerk.
Through your worship, that is all the residents that had registered to speak at the public meeting. However, I've been informed that there are two more additional speakers waiting to speak. Be the pleasure of council, if you'd like to entertain those. I would suggest that, because it is a public meeting, we should listen to them speak. Likely what has happened is somebody has shared a link with those residents.
Okay, well, let's, let's bring them on, let's bring them on line. I think council wants to hear from everybody. So just let me know the next name, and we'll introduce them?
I haven't stated their names.
Oh, so we don't know who they are yet? Okay. So I understand we've got a couple more speakers who haven't spoken yet. If we could, one at a time, if you could unmute and maybe introduce who you are and state your address.
Hi, my name is Ruth Andres, and my husband Stephen is here, and my apologies if my daughter interrupts in the background, and as well as my grandmother. So we're at 6815 High Street, and we would just like to say we echo the sentiments of Ron and Judy, Rick Hamilton, Ryan, Mercedes. We can't thank them enough for their eloquence when they spoke and expressed the concerns that, that we have with this development. We are severely affected by this development, because as you look at the map, our home backs right on to the beautiful green space that we have. And as Mercedes articulated, we recognize that development is something that will happen. We moved here in 2012, and we, we recognized that we had prime real estate in a very beautiful area of Niagara Falls, knowing one day we would probably see some homes in our backyard. We never imagined we would see 67 townhomes as a Phase 1 in our backyard. When I tell people where I live, many people will say, I know exactly where that is, what a beautiful space you have. All of those trees are beautiful. So it's, it's really unfortunate. My father lives in Toronto as well. I know Mercedes moved here from Toronto, and 67 townhomes as a Phase 1 with 67 plus more for a Phase 2 is not the Niagara Falls that I've grown up in. I've grown, I've lived in Chippewa, I lived in Chippewa and have lived in Niagara Falls my whole life. It's not, it's not the place that I want to see become, like, where my father lives in Toronto. So just want to say thank you to our neighbors for their eloquence, and, and really appreciate that, council. I know I wasn't registered for the meeting, so I appreciate that you're listening, because this is a public meeting, so I appreciate that you, you let me speak. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Ruth, and Steve, and Baby, and Grandma. So appreciate your time. I understand we've got someone else also on the line. If you could unmute and introduce yourself and state your address as well, please?
Unless you choose not to. We just, we know you're online, we just don't know if
you want to speak. All right? And if you're speaking, we don't hear you. So you're either muted or you don't want to speak, which is fine, either way. That's it? Okay, all right. Well, I think we've, we've gone through the list of everyone who wanted to speak. So now, are we ready to move to the next stage, Mr. Clerk? Yep? Yep, okay. Council will now, let me see. Yeah, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. So who do we have to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Craig Rowe?
Well, Craig Rowe?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, hello, good evening. So the floor is yours. You're all set to present to council.
Great, thank you very, very much, sir. Planning staff did a very thorough job of describing the application, so we do have a brief presentation, but I'll try not to repeat anything that Mr. Bryce said, and kind of focus on the issues at hand or any clarifications that I can. So I'll just, I'll just cue this up right now, if I may.
Okay, great.
Great. I believe we can all see this now. So, as I said, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Craig Rowe. I'm a senior player with Upper Canada Consultants, and we're the planning and engineering consultant that's representing Centennial Homes on this development on Dorchester Road. Given the amount of public feedback that we've had on this, we thought that would be prudent to provide additional members of our consulting team with us this evening. From R.B. Anderson, I have Adam Milenberger, who's our transportation consultant. I have Jason Stuhli, our professional engineer, civil engineer in the back. Also with me is Joseph Candelaro, representing Centennial Homes. And then we also have Mr. Tom Richardson, the solicitor for the, for the applicant, who's also joining from a separate location this evening. So what is my intention is, is just to bring everyone through a brief explanation of the intent of the applications. That's before you this evening for consideration. So, in terms of what's being proposed, our client is proposing the development of 67 block townhomes on the properties known as 5646, 5678, and 5708 Dorchester Road in Niagara Falls. These units are intended to be developed as a vacant land condominium. And the primary difference between a vacant land condominium and standard condominium is that the vacant land condominium is more similar to a subdivision, and that each home that's constructed also comes with a conveyable unit of land around it. So that also involves front and rear yard spaces for the residents to enjoy. Outside of these privately-owned areas is the common element, and that consists of the private roadway and the municipal servicing, our drainage and swale system, as well as our visitor parking that's on-site. In order to move forward with this development plan, we do need to rezon the site. We're currently zoned a residential 1B density zone, and what that does is it only permits single-detached dwellings. So the widely-accepted zoning that's used for condominium developments is the R4 multiple-dwelling-unit zone, and that's the zone that we're going for through this amendment. It's really the most appropriate, and it has a lot of similar provisions that you see with some of the low-density zones like the R1, R2, and R3. So this is the, the subject lands encompasses about 1.7 hectares, and it has about 107 meters of frontage along Dorchester Road. Recently, we've undertaken our land titles application, so this is now consolidated to one parcel of land. It's no longer three properties, it's just one parcel now. So in terms of the planning context, as noted in staff's presentation, the subject land... the subject lands are located in the Niagara Falls urban area, subsequently in the provincially delineated built-up area. Both of these locations are priority locations for growth and development within urban communities. And these forms of development are supposed to be compact in nature and location or close proximity to things like parkland, shops, public transit, and other urban amenities. The subject lands are designated in the city's official plan as residential. And as Mr. Bryce alluded to, this permits all forms of residential houses, including townhomes, which is what we're proposing. It also comes with a requisite density that cannot exceed 4 US per hectare. We're at the top end of that at 40 US per hectare, but we do conform to the official plan in that regard. With the subject lands being zoned R1 and only permitting single detached ones, we've had to undertake this zoning amendment to bring in block townhomes as a permitted use. By doing this, we're creating a mix of housing types in the neighborhood, as well as a different type of tenure with a condominium. And this actually dovetails quite closely with some of the news that's come out of the province today about the impetus from the provincial level for the need for for more housing, a mix of housing, and really bringing a lot of units online and rethinking the way we grow our communities and provide housing opportunities. We know that housing supply is a priority for this council's passing your housing strategy, and we feel that this application aligns very well with that. The alpha in the room here is that the subject lands contain several trees. We've heard a lot of public feedback about the enjoyment of the trees on the property. And as seen in those conditions of approval, we're going to be required to take a close look at the perimeter development and see where we can preserve those mature trees where possible. We need to get into our detailed engineering grading design to find out what we can preserve. I would like to provide one clarification. There's no requirement for any trees to be removed on adjacent properties. There may be some trimming for any significant overhang. But when it comes to engineering, we're going to have to stay out of the root system of those trees. We need to work around those trees that are neighboring properties. So we're not cutting down anything that's not on our land. And we're happy to work with the city through this to find a really good planting strategy and a landscape plan and bring more appropriate species into the development that are going to provide screening function and ecological benefit for the development. So there's been a lot of talk of the tree preservation plan, but not a lot of talk about the landscape plan, which really proposes a full replacement of all the trees that are being removed. And we'll continue to work with staff to refine that plan and make sure that we create a great place to live. It's in the interest of the neighborhood. It's also in the interest of our client. From an accessibility standpoint, the subject lands are in an ideal location. They're on public transit, they're in a walkable neighborhood, and they're right off the provincial highway. They're next to regional roads. This is exactly the location that we want to see increased density and mixes of housing forms to create complete communities and really achieve some of those growth targets and accommodate all the people that are moving to Niagara to enjoy living here. In terms of the servicing, I will note that, yes, there's a sewer separation project that will be undertaken. This development is also serving as a bit of a catalyst for that. There is certainly an issue with the sanitary sewer in the area and stormwater flows. And our client will be participating in cost sharing with the municipality to help implement that infrastructure and hopefully alleviate some of those existing conditions that are affecting the area residents. So just in terms of the zoning amendment, it applies into the entirety of the land, which is what I'm showing on here, from that R1 going to the R4. There were some site-specific deviations from the bylaw. And this is really out of just kind of some technical provision, making sure we got the design that our client was looking for onto the site. And if this was a base zoning, in my opinion, as a planner, these are really almost minor variances. The minimum lot area is minus three square meters per unit, which is effectively a negligible impact. Reducing the minimum privacy yard in the north and south where we have significant setbacks with existing dwellings and the opportunity to do landscape screening around the perimeter. In that back-to-back configuration in the middle, we're allowed to bring those townhomes closer together in more of a tighter recondition. Our minimum front yard setbacks, we're asking for those because we do have a significant road widening. And we're trying to make sure that we still provide a presence facing the street on Dorchester to maintain that built character. And that's also conveyed through the covered porch requirement. We're providing some additional architectural design on the facades that are facing Dorchester Road to make a very consistent linear pattern of development that goes down Dorchester Road, so contributing positively to the public realm. So this is the site plan. So these areas that are kind of squared here, these are the areas that Mr. Bryce pointed to, that where our variances are effectively taking place. So we've done a back-to-back configuration, which is what's largely found in this area, houses backing onto one another, both on woodland, High Street, and then up here, if those additional lands to the north are developed by the owner at some point in time. And then having a compact condition here, but also some good breaks in the built form, allow sunlight through, convenient parking locations, so people don't need to walk too far, and the ability to circulate vehicles around safely. And then this is just the draft plan of condominium. I just wanted to highlight this. As you can see, for example, here would be the dwelling unit and the front side and rear yard areas. These would be owned by the persons that purchased the unit, so they would have exclusive use over these areas. And that's where their dedicated amenity, their decks, lawns, gardens, things like that would be provided. So in terms of the next steps, the report is provided to council tonight for consideration. If it is approved this evening, it's our client's intention to move immediately into detailed engineering. We'd not only like to get the project underway, but also dovetail with the works that the city's undertaking to get that sewer project underway. There's a lot of work to do and they're eager to get started. What we'll have to do from a planning perspective is our clearance of conditions, which functions as almost a site plan control in the city of Niagara Falls, where we flush out the landscape plan, the detailed architectural stylings of the dwelling, as well as our landscape plan, things like photometric. I know that neighbor, Mr. Gibson, pointed out about things like light trespass. We need to provide all this information to staff. And we're confident that working closely with them, we're going to be able to achieve a very compatible development with no negative impacts on any of that adjacent development. A little ambitious, but in a blue-sky world, construction of some kind may be possible in fall 2022. But if approval is passed this evening, our client is committed to moving forward rather quickly. So I'll stop this. Those are, those are my comments this evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As I said, all members of our team are happy to answer any questions that you may have, including Mr. Richardson, who's dialing in. And I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Maybe at this point, before Mr. Richardson comes online, we'll just see, is any questions of council for Mr. Rowe? Any questions at this point? No? Okay, it looks like there's no questions of council. No? Okay. So did you want to bring Mr. Richardson on then? Is he going to address council?
Through Mr. Chair, I don't believe he had any remarks prepared. He was just making himself available, but certainly if he could be included in the room in case any questions are passed our way.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. I'm here, able to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. So let me get back to my list here. So are there any other questions of council for staff, for the applicant? Are there any questions of clarification? Or is there anything else anyone wants to know? No? Okay. Yes, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that I'm about sustainable development, that I'm not anti-development. And I look at this proposal, and I'm really concerned about a lot of things. One is the tree cover, which we have been talking about. The Niagara region tree canopy is 18.86%, and we're supposed to be at 30%. I've heard Niagara Falls is around 14%, but it's been so long since we've updated it. I'm not sure it's accurate. So if we take a lot of these trees away, that's even going to decrease it more. Some of the things I'm concerned about are the three vacant lots, which are next door. I think we should be looking at that as a whole. When you look at Schedule 6 and all of the trees that are on there, the trees that, some of the trees that are being preserved, the center, what did they call it? The tree crown is the middle of the tree, and a lot of the middle are on the outside of the lot. So I guess technically, if the applicant owns those pieces of property, they're also his trees or her trees. But those trees are the ones that are preserved. So if there's 232 assessed trees, they're removing 164, which leaves 68 trees being preserved. A lot of the preserved trees are on the outside, and I understand that there was just a comment that they're not taking any neighbors' trees away. But those are trees that are going to be on the outside of the lot line. So those vacant lots on the other side, I think we need to be looking at all of this together because we're looking at the density of all of these houses with those vacant and those vacant lots. And then they are going to be developed. And then are those trees also going to be removed? So that was one point. I know a lot of-
Just for clarification, counsel, are you talking about a different parcel that doesn't belong to this developer?
It's the vacant lot right beside, there's three, there's three other parcels. And I'm not sure who owns that one, but they're saying they're preserving trees that are on the next lot. So either you can't say you're preserving somebody else's tree and put that in in those numbers to say, here's the number we're preserving. They're not their trees. Or if they are their trees, and they own those lots, will they be affected in the next development? So I'm not sure which one it is, but if they're outside of it and they're preserving them, they shouldn't be in the numbers that they're preserving them.
Okay, so maybe we get clarification once you ask your questions, Mr. Rowe.
I know a lot of the residents were concerned about flooding. And it did say in the report that there was, no one was aware of flooding. There are infrastructure issues there, specifically with woodland being lower and the grading of any new new development. And we've seen this. I've had many, many residents call me. A new development gets developed, and then it's okay for a while, and then the neighbors start feeling that there's water going on to their properties. I've had some discussions with our CAO, and I'm trying to find some way of fixing this or coming up with alternatives. What happens is on the developed area, the engineer signs off that they've done everything properly. What then happens to the land around it, the neighbors start to feel flooding on their property. So if they're already having issues, I'm concerned about that. I talked about the tree crown. The traffic is definitely an issue. If you look at the, if you drive down Dorchester Road, you'll see huge lineups waiting to go through the traffic light. I can't see how that's going to not be affected. The other wording about the trees was if possible or if feasible, we're looking at those numbers, and maybe that's not even what's going to happen. They might say, oh, it wasn't possible. We're cutting it down. So that's definitely an issue for me. And I find it quite ironic that it's called a tree-saving plan. It's not really a tree-saving plan to me. We're cutting them down. Sure, we're going to plant 174 new trees, but some of those trees are huge. That's going to get torn down and new trees will be planted. I know they said large caliper. I don't know how long, how big they're going to go, but it's not the same. You're going to cut down a tree because there was just mention of the roots. They need to move the roots to develop and and all of that. So it's not a tree-saving plan to me. They are asking for amendments of the setbacks, and the developer just said that they're doing that because of the expansion of the road widening. But then that's more, you're putting more dense. So if you didn't do the expansion with the amendment, how many houses could you get in there? This is not affordable housing. If this was affordable housing, you know, maybe you look at give and take. Do you give up some trees to have some affordable housing? Do you have some affordable housing and keep some of the trees? The other issue for me is the park. A lot of the developments that we look at, there is no room for a park. They only have a certain amount of space. They put the houses there, and there's no room. There's tons of room on this development. It's all how it needs to be reconfigured. It could go from these townhouses to single-family homes. I would like to see the developer bring back a different development plan where they look at less intensification with single-family homes, preserve more trees, and parklands. I don't want to ask for a deferral at this point, but I'm hoping that the developer will reconfigure what they have at this point. Those are my comments.
Thank you for that. Excuse me. Any other questions or comments of council? Yes, Counsel DeBros?
Just for clarification, and I'm not even sure, and that's why I'm asking, the tree canopy that we're talking about, when we plant new trees, are they part of that tree canopy or that number? How does that work? Or does it, do we have to wait until a tree's a certain age?
Well, maybe our CEO, I think, is going to weigh in-
Yeah, just so I can, and just to Counsel LaCoco's point, if we're actually saving or replanting and not saving, but wondering if we're adding to the tree canopy in that percentage.
Through the chair, and I'll have Mr. Nickel provide further comment. We haven't had a good tree inventory of the inventory that we own. And the tree canopy is calculated based upon the amount of green coverage over the municipal boundary area. So you will reduce tree coverage, you know, when you plant a new tree, it provides limited coverage until it matures.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Nickel, you want to weigh in on that, too?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I can add is that we don't do an on-the-ground survey for tree canopy. It's all done from aerials to pop down. So if it's a large tree, the large canopy will contribute more to the overall canopy coverage. And our inventory is spelt as of 2016, and it doesn't include private trees or woodlots. So it really doesn't relate to the overall municipal tree canopy.
Okay, clear for that? Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments of council? None? Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, Counsel Strange?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and through to the developer. I know the one resident said that he was trying to compromise with him to try to reduce or try to make it different from 67 to 20, is it 20? Single-family? Like, was that part of any interest to your group at all to to change it to single-family? Or are you set on the on the townhouses?
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the counselor, we went through a variety of different concepts in developing the plan for these lands. You know, we do acknowledge the desire of the neighbors to see, you know, more similar single detached out there. But the current planning framework, you know, the interest, the public interest is to provide more housing. And large lots with with single detached dwellings are an underutilization of available urban lands, which are scarce, which is the reason that we're now expanding urban boundaries to accommodate that growth. So from our client's perspective, this was an efficient and appropriate compatible use of the land. But I will note, we did look at some some original concepts, but the goal has been to ensure that we have a compact development that's consistent with provincial, regional, and local policy.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, go ahead, Counsel DeBros.
One more through you to Mr. Rowe. Affordable housing was mentioned a number of times, and I'm not sure, maybe I misheard, but out of the 67 units, how many are geared towards affordable housing? Because I heard-
Yeah, Mr. Rowe, are any of the units geared toward affordable housing?
Through Mr. Chair, under the definition of affordable housing, being the 30% of income, no, none would fall under that definition.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. Okay, so if there's no, oh, Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, your worship. There had to be some public meeting prior to coming to council. My question is, were the concerns that the neighbors expressed this evening expressed at that public meeting?
Mr. Rowe, would you be able to address that?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Yes, we actually were able to obtain a video of that that open house and copies of all the public submissions. And within the staff report before council tonight, we provided a chart with detailed responses to all of those questions that we were able to write down. 73 responses in total. So we feel that we've done our very best to provide responses to those questions, guidance and clarity, and staff used those responses to inform their recommendation.
Counsel?
Well, obviously, their concerns weren't addressed because the development is still something that they don't want to see happen there. I mean, they offered the opportunity for a compromise. And it sounds to me that you guys are not willing to compromise.
Okay, I'll I'll leave that for Mr. Rowe. You don't necessarily have to comment specifically. Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the 73 questions. I went through them, and I was at the open house to hear the concerns, and I've talked to the residents. They did not feel that a lot of them were answered. They were answered with a lot of planning jargon of, we're allowed to do this. So this is what we're doing, that sort of thing. It didn't really address the concerns of the residents. I'm not seeing anybody put a motion on the floor, and if you want to-
Well, we're not there yet. We haven't closed the meeting yet.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, Counsel Carrion?
Well, your worship, there seems like there's a, there's a very large disconnect between what we were given as the recommendation by our planners and what the residents don't want to see there. So I don't know whether or not our planners are going to attempt to answer any more of the questions. But if they were, I was going to suggest that their answers would include some relevance to the topics or the issues that the residents have as it relates- it relates to what our planners are using to make the recommendation to us. Because there's a huge disconnect between what's important to the residents and the surrounding living people, to what our planners are using to make the recommendations to us. So I, I at least would like to hear a comment from our planners i- in that respect so that the residents understand if we vote for this, why we're voting for this and what they can do if they don't like what we're doing. Because, uh, as you know, I've stood up here before and said there are a lot of these developments that I don't like. And if I was a neighbor in the area, I understand and I wouldn't like it either. But when I listen to the planners explain how they arrived at their recommendation to us, I understand that we are put in an almost an impossible position. We got two choices. Uh, we vote for it and the developer takes it to L P A T and L P A T makes a decision. Or, uh, uh, we don't vote for it. Uh, you know, and either way, it ends up at L P A T, whether or not it's driven by the residents or, um, by the developer, uh, to make the decision. But the decision, if our staff could reiterate, how the decision's going to be made and what's going to be the determining factors so the residents understand what is really relevant in the decision-making process. I don't know if they understand it by some of the concerns, they made great presentations. But as I'm listening to the presentations, I don't see how that ties into what our planners are telling us they've used to make the decision to recommend council approve it.
So maybe we can go to either Ms. Dolch or Mr. Bryce, if you could help us out here with giving us from your planning purview.
He did mention.
Yeah, just to kind of help us bring it back to center so we can, help us make a decision. And if you could, uh, explain, you know, regarding things that are concerns, intensification, uh, sewer separation, parkland, uh, some of the questions, tree coverage, uh, seem to be some of the key issues that, that were, we were asked about. And then the other question is, if then this ends up at the Ontario Land Tribunal, what typically, you know, what's our expected outcome should it end up there? So maybe, I don't know if I, it's a bit of a loaded question, but maybe if you could help us understand overall after everything we've heard, the rationale on, on why this is being recommended versus what the residents that live in the area are thinking.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll start and Mr., if Mr. Bryce wants to add in anything, he's been heavily involved in the file, uh, and I'm relatively new to the file. Um, I do want to say a couple of things, uh, with regard to intensification. Um, I do, I do understand we do use a lot of planning jargon, so I'm going to try to explain it as simply as I can, um, without that planning jargon. So generally, we're trying to find places for people to live, um, and grow in their neighborhood. So as you proceed through life, um, you know, from first time homeowners to retirees, that you have a place to go. Um, as you get through your stages in life, you don't necessarily want those big lots, those large single family homes, you want smaller homes. So we're trying to find places for people to age in place, uh, be able to take transit, be able to, uh, stay within their neighborhood and still visit the commercial places they, they enjoy and love currently. So with that, we, we do need to look at some diversification of housing because the city of Niagara Falls is, is currently has a high number of single detached dwellings, which we're, we're quite aware of. Um, this particular site, uh, for example, is on the bus route, which is the key, um, factor for us for, for intensification and some diversification. Um, in terms of compatibility, and I know one resident raised compatibility, in terms of compatibility, although compatibility to some may seem it needs to be the same, that isn't the definition of compatibility. Compatibility is, is something that can, can live and can work together, um, and, and, and not offend one another. So for example, an industrial next to a residential wouldn't be compatible because there, there uses that don't integrate well together. These are two residential uses, just different forms of housing. Um, in terms of the tree canopy, um, we have provided a recommendation in our report, uh, and Mr. Bryce looked heavily into this, and we are recommending some larger caliber trees be planted. Um, in terms of, we did look at, could we protect any further trees, um, things like that? But the issue is grading and drainage do, uh, impact those as well. So there is rail systems that need to be included, um, to drain the water away to make sure those residents don't have flooding in their, in their yards. So we do need to do that and by doing those drainage channels, um, they do go into the tree root. So you have to be very, you know, careful on how we do all that. Um, but that also impacts the tree canopy unfortunately. Um, in terms of, I'm trying to think of all the issues here that we've raised, in terms of a parkland, there is parkland within, uh, close proximity, uh, less than point five kilometers away, which is about a five minute walk. Um, usually we try to make sure that those facilities are within, you know, a kilometer, two kilometers, um, of walking distance for residents. Obviously, uh, parkland, unless it's private parkland, uh, which is always an option, um, you know, it costs the municipality to maintain and, and we do try to create larger parks rather than small little parquettes where we can. Uh, depending on the density of the area, uh, sometimes you can provide smaller parquetts, but not in this case, it's not dense enough. Um, I won't speak much to traffic. Obviously, there was a traffic impact study prepared. Uh, it was reviewed by our, um, our engineering staff, um, and the consultant did indicate that it wasn't, um, an issue, uh, traffic wise. And I, I'm not an expert in traffic, so I'm not, I'm going to rely on those experts. Um, and I think that's all I'm going to mention at this point unless Mr. Bryce has anything else to add.
That's great. Thank you for that. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Bryce here, I'll set, I see you got your hand up there.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, uh, uh, answer a couple of specific questions of the, uh, the residents, uh, one was concerns about light pollution. Um, through the conditions of approval, the applicant will have to submit to a photometric plan that demonstrates little, uh, zero light trespass on adjacent properties. Uh, number two, there was a question about easements. Um, our legal services section reviewed the title of the property, there were no easements that were registered in the title. Uh, however, I wanted to add that as conditions of approval, uh, Bell, Canada, uh, Enbridge and Canada Post have submitted conditions. Uh, Bell, Canada in specific, uh, specifically have noted that, uh, if there's any, uh, any easements would have to be, uh, basically, uh, protected or relocated at the developer's cost. And, uh, Enbridge has noted that, uh, if they require any easements, they will have to be provided by the developer at their cost. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then the other part, did I hear correctly that there's going to be full replacement of trees? So I know trees are going to be taken down and you're requesting, uh, larger caliber trees. I thought I heard, um, Mr. Rowe say that there would be full replacement of trees. Is that true?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, um, landscape plan submitted by the developer indicated, uh, equivalent number of trees being planted, uh, to those being removed.
Okay. Thank you for that. I've got, I got Counsel Campbell and then DeBroski. Okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Bryce and Ms. Dolch.
Thank you, Your Worship. With respect to, uh, those comments about trees, if you take a close look at page, uh, I don't even know what page is I'm on, uh, twenty-four of twenty-eight, it shows you specifically the number of trees that are going to be taken down. Why? Because they can't make their project with leaving the trees there. But if I look at that whole development, where are they going to plant these trees that they said they were going to plant? There's no space on there for trees. None at all. Not going to put it in my backyard. So I, I'm sorry, uh, the more I, I think about this, um, I, I can't vote in favor of it.
Okay. Maybe we'll ask, uh, Mr. Rowe, um, where, I mean, is there, is there space on site for these trees for full replacement?
Through, Mr. Mayor, uh, the landscape plan, uh, that, that we provided with our, our submission has included a schedule five, uh, of your, of your staff report this evening. I think it's page twenty-two, I think it's page twenty-three. Uh, it's not numbered. Um, but as you can see, there's, there's a variety of, of the trees of different types and scales and species, uh, native to the area that are, are planned to be, uh, provided throughout the site. Um, they may not be exactly the same scale of, of those trees that currently exist or even of the same species. Um, but the landscape plan is also under the purview of the city of Niagara Falls, uh, and their, uh, their parks department, uh, and their, their own, uh, staff that, that deal with these matters. Uh, and we'll have to see, uh, obtain their approval through our detailed design, uh, to ensure we get that appropriate mix, those large caliber trees, uh, that Ms. Dolch was, was, uh, speaking about. Um, this all has to run through the review. This was just more of a preliminary exercise, but I, I would say that schedule five does provide a clear indication of where the tree plantings at a preliminary level are to be placed.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, Counsel DeBroski?
Yeah, just Counsel Campbell's pointing, page five of the, the staff report, they mentioned two hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and thirty-two were assessed, one hundred and sixty-four might be, um, taken down for, for the development, but they're, they're planting one hundred and seventy-four new trees. So it's ten more than was additionally there. Um, just a question through you to the, to Mr. Rowe, the site plan process, have there been discussions with the residents that are affected by the potential development and including them in that process on where trees could be planted or, or what the site plan could look like? And if not, is that something that they would consider?
Yeah. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, through, through you to the counselor, um, the site plan process is, is directly with the city of Niagara Falls staff, but I, I do believe that the comments that, that we've heard, uh, as the applicant, as well as the, uh, comments that city staff have are, are going to be directing, um, how these plans are prepared and, and what they're going to look like. Um, so I, I would suggest that, uh, you know, those, those comments are out there and those desires have been voiced, uh, and we'll do our very best, uh, to, to accommodate those where we can.
So you're willing to accommodate? Just, sorry, short answer, long. Correct?
Yeah. So maybe we can ask our staff, Ms. Dolch, so if that was part of this, that the residents be part of the site plan, I mean, that's something that we can, uh, add in?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, that's not, normally site plan approval, uh, doesn't involve residential participation, but that is something if council wishes to do so, could add that in, um, for discussion.
Okay. Anything further? Yeah? Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Did we have any other questions? Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the size of the large caliber tree? So we can get an idea. We haven't been told how, how big the tree is because I'm concerned there's these little round circles on schedule five and when you go to schedule six, they're huge circles. What, what is the difference in, in the size?
Yeah. I don't know who would answer that question. What's considered a larger caliber tree? Who would know that answer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll, I'll take a stab at it. I'm, I'm not an expert in this, but certainly, uh, just generally, the large caliber trees are, are more mature. Um, I know that there's been some reference to larger caliber, uh, coniferous trees to provide some screening, um, but, but the caliber is also derivative of the type of species of tree that you're planting. But I, I think the, uh, in plain language, I, I apologize if I'm using a little bit too much plain jargon tonight, but basically, we're going to be looking for bigger, more mature trees to be planted rather than saplings and seedlings.
No, and I think, I think we understand that. I think she's just asking like, what, what, what does that mean? I mean, what's the diameter? What's the height? I mean, versus a sapling?
That's the name of the tree.
Or a name, just any kind of, any kind of deep, layman details for something like that.
Uh, to, to, Mr. Mayor, unfortunately, I, I wouldn't know the, the, the best way to qualify what's, what's large caliber and what's not, but, uh, certainly have faith in the, uh, the parks department that they can direct us in the appropriate, uh, fashion.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so they don't have that. That's the, the planners, I guess, not the forestry people. They don't.
So, so my concern is the language where possible about saving trees and we have a, a map with little dots about where the trees are going to be planted, but we don't know how big they are or how, what kind they are or how long they're going to take to grow. Um, i- if you go into some of the newer subdivisions, there's the houses and there's these little sticks of, for trees and they've been there for ten or twenty years and they're still sticks. So, um, that, that's my question is where, where are these trees? Um, again, I, I hope that the, wish that the developer would come back with an alternate plan. I don't know how the vote's going to go tonight. Rather than declining it, would they come back with another plan?
Okay. Um, okay. Any other questions or specific questions or specific comments to this? Cause I'm getting ready to close the public meeting. It's just everyone's last chance. If there's some information you need to gather or something that someone needs to say, this is their, their chance. So, uh, I don't know whether it's staff or whether, or, uh, proponents, if there's anything here and if not, all, we've got Counsel Thompson. Uh, well, this is a question, but I haven't closed the meeting yet. Uh, is it a question about this? Okay.
Anyway, um, I had spent a lot of time, uh, looking into this situation and, uh, I'm very development, uh, in favor. Uh, and any houses that we put up is what we need for the future of this municipality. And you had the, uh, planning department suggesting that this has to be intensified and also it's, uh, um, meets all of their rezoning and their concerns. And everything I heard in negativity, um, was offset, the trees, um, the comments about, uh, flooding, um, you know, the best thing you can have for a subdivision is having a proper subdivision. And if you, if it's just a case, we don't want to see any, uh, townhouses. I live in an area where there's a hundred, uh, townhouses and it's very, very enjoyable. So everything, the sewer, um, everything that, that the people, uh, who they're trying to do this are accommodating and doing what they're supposed to do. So do we want development in the city? Um, if anybody has any, uh, vacant property around them, they should sell and get out because, um, what's going to happen in this city, uh, in the future, the short term, we're getting all people from Toronto and retirement people here and that's what we need for development. So, um, I think they've done a great job in making sure they answer the questions and the trees grow. So what's the problem? They're putting in more trees and, uh, sewer and intensive. And also they, uh, the planning people are saying, if it goes to L P A T, that's going to be in their favor. So anyway, do we want to have development in Niagara Falls?
Okay. Uh, Counsel Carrier.
Just, just a quick one, Your Worship. The fact of the matter is this council can't stop this development. It falls within the guidelines of the provincial mandate on what can be done in this property. So the only thing that our council can do is try and get as many things that the residents are asking for included in this development and it's our opportunity now to ask them. So, and I think that the only thing I saw that we probably could get them to do that the residents want, that they might agree to do, is give us more comfort on what they plant for trees and the amount of trees comes closer to giving us the same canopy or close to that canopy over that piece of property that's there today. So I would ask, um, like I said, I believe if we turn it down, it goes to L P A T and the bad thing about that in is our planning people become their witnesses. So I would rather, uh, we, we ask for, uh, some of the things we think that are reasonable to get from them today and then our hands are tied. We're going to, if the residents decide that they don't like what they see, they can take it to L P A T. It's their right. They can do, that's their right to do it, but I don't think that I've done my job properly if I don't ask for something that I think I could get. And I think I could, if I ask it to be included when the motion comes up for either better tree canopy, more trees, sustainable trees, as, uh, Counsel LaCoco was saying, in many subdivisions you drive by later and they've planted a hundred and sixty-seven trees and there's only three of them left alive. The rest are the little twigs sticking up all around the neighborhood. So I think there's got to be a way that we can make, uh, make it so that there has to be a sustainable, uh, tree planting program. a sustainable tree planting program. So that five, six, seven, eight years from now, when we look at, you know, whether we like what we're seeing or not, at least there's a reasonable tree canopy, which may make some of the neighbors happy. So if it comes to the vote, I will ask for something more than they've asked or offered to put in for trees. But I don't think that we have any choice but to support development.
Okay, maybe I can go to Ms. Dolch or Mr. Bryce. Excuse me, is there some assurance for council in regard to the tree canopy? I know that Mr. Rowe said earlier, full replacement of trees. How can we ensure that that's the case? Do we have anything that can give us some comfort in that regard? As Counselor Carrio was mentioning.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to you, to Mr. Carrio, or Counselor Carrio. In terms of the trees, we do have site plan control, obviously. That's something that's reviewed by staff, reviewed by Parks and Rec staff as well. So it's something we'll be keeping an eye on. We'll definitely, obviously, we're aware that the commitment has been made on the replacement of trees. We'll definitely make sure the replacement of trees happens. We've also, as, as you've noted, recommended the larger caliper trees. Again, difficult to say what those will be depending, as Mr. Rowe said, depending on the tree species. Generally, our recommendation on that point was, we don't want to see the little sapling trees. Because they don't, they're small and really don't provide that, any tree canopy early on. So we want to see a little bit larger caliper. So we will be watching that through the site plan agreement and it is within our purview. And we review and approve it through council, obviously. So that's something we'll be looking at.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor.
Just a follow-up to that question to Kira. Can we also, can we also ask for a system that waters the trees, Kira? Because many of the trees that they plant, you know, if they're planted on the boulevards or whatever, if they're not looked after, if they don't have a drip on them, if they're not watered, they don't live. Can that be included in, can we ask for that in a site plan?
Ms. Dolch? Yeah, so are you talking about those green bags are at the bottom that they?
Well, actually, an irrigation system to keep the trees watered. Because if you plant the trees and no one waters them, they don't live.
Yeah.
So, and I know what we're saying is, we ask them to plant them. But two, three, four years down the road, if there's nothing in place to sustain the trees, then what? Do we make sure that they keep replacing them? That's what worries me, not just the fact that they do it, but can we ask for an irrigation system to be included with the trees that are planted? Because any place that I've planted trees, unless I put an irrigation system in, and I planted lots of trees, anywhere I've put an irrigation system in, the trees have survived. If not, they don't. And if you overwater them, you drown them. And if you don't water them, they die. So they need to have a proper watering system. And someone putting the trees in that knows how to sustain them, not just plant them. Because I planted lots, not knowing how to do it, and they've all died, so.
Ms. Dolch?
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the Counselor. In terms of an irrigation system, it's a unique request. I've done it before on a commercial property, asked for irrigation. However, in this situation, it's a bit different with residential properties. You know, in, in certain instances, you do have to remember that these trees will be owned by those residents as well. The irrigation system obviously would also have to be owned by them. I don't know if Mr. Rowe has any comments because it is a condominium. The difficulty it is, is that a lot of the trees that I see on this landscape plan are within the, what they call the exclusive use area, which will be owned up by the homeowner. So they would be responsible for that irrigation system. And they would have to set that up through the condominium agreement.
Does that answer the question? Yep, okay, great, thank you for that. I've got Counselor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to approve this with some sort of amendment like Counselor Carrio just talked about, Mr. Rowe and Ms. Dolch just said that they weren't tree experts. And I'm afraid if we approve this with some conditions about what type of tree, how, how big the tree is, how fast will it grow? The experts that we have today are not tree experts. Again, I was wondering, can they come back with that information and, and, and present it again instead of approving it and not knowing what exactly we're asking for? Can it be done? We don't know how big the trees are going to be. I know Ms. Dolch said within the site plan that we have control over that. But the wording, you know, will save trees where possible. We, we don't have control of, over that. If a developer goes in and sees a bunch of roots that are already dead, oh, sorry, we can't save the tree. There goes that tree. I would like more of a, a commitment to this. And I don't know if approving this development with a couple of adjustments would, would do it for me.
Yeah, so I'll ask Ms. Dolch if you could just weigh in on that. Because we don't have any tree experts per se on, on the call necessarily. What's your thoughts? You've been through this process lots of times. What, what do you suggest?
So through you to the Counselor, your worship. In terms of, obviously, yes, I'm not a tree expert. But we will be obviously utilizing staff and experts on our staff for that consultation. It won't be myself or Mr. Bryce providing those, those comments to Mr. Rowe as we look at this plan. In terms of, you know, types and species, I think it's going to be dependent on, as we go along, you know, privacy. So for example, along the edges of the existing single family, there might be a different types of tree species. And I think Mr. Rowe alluded to it, some evergreens, things like that, that provide a little more screening for those existing residents. And something we'll be looking at, obviously, but with our experts that we have and through the experts that Mr. Rowe has on, on, on retainer with his group. So my suggestion is, you know, you leave it with staff. We, we are cognizant of the concerns of the residents, especially with regard to the tree canopy. We will definitely keep it in mind as we move through the process and ensure that the, the caliper is a bit of, is a larger sized caliper. Again, depending on the tree species, I can't give you an exact size. I think, you know, I can only, I know, I don't even want to go there. Sorry, I, I generally know the sapling sizes, but I, I don't know what size it'll be depending on the tree. So that would be my recommendation at this point, is that we just deal with it. Again, there is some issue, and I know, sorry, one last point. In terms of the tree preservation, the reason we say if possible, there is, I know Mr. Rowe's group is trying to preserve as much as they can along that, that edge. And they use this, this vac system to vacuum around the tree roots to try to preserve them in consultation with an arborist, which is in, in the tree preservation plan. That arborist will be on site while that work occurs and will be providing recommendations. So, you know, depending on the situation, once you get on site and the drainage, and we're not there yet in terms of detailed design on drainage, which is difficult to say. The exact, you know, they'll try to keep as many trees along that perimeter is my understanding. And perhaps Mr. Rowe can weigh in.
Yeah, I see Mr. Rowe's got his hand up as well to address that. Yeah, Mr. Rowe?
Great. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple points to add. We were just having some conversations. Anecdotally, a typical subdivision tree is 50 millimeter caliper, is what our engineering staff is telling. But yes, through, through the process going forward, like, like I said before, it was a preliminary landscape plan that, that we provided based on our preliminary architecture. So there, there is design work to do on this. But we do have the benefit that we have the arborist from Beacon that's part of our consulting team. We also need to provide a landscape plan that's been prepared by an Ontario landscape architect that's certified. And together, those two professionals working with city staff are going to be able to help us pick the species, the biodiversity, the, put them in the right spots if they need more sun or less sun. So I, I would just respectfully say that, you know, we're, we're getting a little detailed about the type of trees and the size and everything. And, and we feel confident that we have the right people on our team in place, paired with city staff's overview and control over the site plan process to ensure that we provide the, the most appropriate landscape plan for that property.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor LaCoco?
One final question, Mr. Mayor. Would it be detrimental to the developer if it was deferred to come back at a later date when you can provide more information specifically about the trees, the irrigation, the size, the species? Would it be detrimental if it didn't get approved today?
Mr. Rowe, did you want to weigh in on that?
Through Mr. Chair, I, I would say perhaps detrimental, but I respectfully, I'd say a bit unreasonable. Just as we've alluded to several times, that there's, there's quite a bit of detailed grading and engineering work to do. And we, we really need to understand the form and the massing of this. We're, we're just asking tonight for, to establish tenure and to allow for townhouses to go on site with some general site-specific setbacks. You know, deferring it, I, I don't think that we would be in a position to provide any further more detailed information that still wouldn't be subject to change as we went through those detailed exercises.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. And just come to you one sec. Just, just for clarity, Kira, so council can request that this be done under site plan control. Is that, is that right? And can you just elaborate for council what that would mean? Either Ms., for the trees regarding the tree concern? Either Mr. Bryce or Ms. Dolch, whoever wants to?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, because it's a multi-residential site, it is subject to site plan control. And that is something we do deal with, is the tree planting and landscaping plan. And I don't know if Mr. Bryce wants to add anything else.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes, I'd just like to add that we do have a condition of approval with the condominium that landscape plan be reviewed by our landscape architect. Our landscape architect has indicated that there appears to be an opportunity to plant larger caliper trees. And that would be larger than the typical 50 millimeter. So he's identified that the landscape plan should show that where, where it's feasible, where it's possible. And that would be like in the backyards of the, of the properties that, about the adjacent dwellings where trees are being removed.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got Counselor Campbell.
Was that 50 millimeters?
Yeah, 50 millimeters. Yeah, for traditional, yeah.
You know how much 50 cent, or 50 millimeters is?
I can't see that far.
Oh, no, you can't see it. It's not even as big as this cup bottom. I mean, I think that's going to be 100. So 50 is really, really, really thin.
Well, it's not going to be 50. They say that's the traditional one, 50. They're going to use larger than 50.
I'm sure this, they're going to use what, what's necessary for them to, to put these trees in.
Yes, Counselor Dubrowski?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, let me, okay, tell you what, I'm going to, if we don't have any quest, any further questions, I'm going to close the meeting. So then we can move the ball forward, one way or the other. Okay, so the public meeting with respect to the proposed draft plan of vacant land condominium and zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. What's the will of council? Counselor Dubrowski?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to support all of the staff recommendations and then being cognizant of the fact that, and I'm not a tree expert by any means, but I do know that there's trees that grow faster or slower or wider or taller. So Ms. Dolch had mentioned working through the site plan process, that maybe we can get an agricultural expert to ensure that we're planting the right trees in the right areas. So I'm not sure how to add that as part of the motion, but wanted to see if we can include those residents in and around the area in that site plan control process. And Counselor Strange had mentioned something earlier, and I forget. The irrigation system, if we can potentially have the developer look into that. I know that's asking a lot, but either way, support the staff recommendations, ensure that we can include the residents in the site plan control process. And of course, talk to an agricultural expert to ensure, and to Counselor Campbell's point, I agree, the diameter is maybe not that big, but depending on the type of species or tree, they might grow faster than other types. And just because they start out at two inches, it doesn't mean they'll end up that way in a couple of years. But it's a long convoluted motion. That was a long convoluted discussion, so I'm hoping I captured a couple of points that Mr. Mattson picked up on.
Okay, and did that include site plan control?
And including the, potentially including the residents that are affected by the development?
And including the residents.
Process. Or in the, the site plan control process, but the agricultural component, I guess, of it.
So Mr. Clerk, is that clear to you? And Ms. Dolch, is that clear to you? I know you went on a little bit, but I mean, is that clear?
It was a short story long.
Yes, okay, the clerk's good. And Ms. Dolch, is that good with you on your end? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's great. Do we have a second for that motion? Counselor Thompson, second? Okay, any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, a recorded vote by Counselor Thompson? Counselor Campbell? Counselor Dubrowski? Counselor Carrio?
In favor.
Counselor LaCoco?
Against.
Counselor Peter Angelo? Counselor Strange? Counselor Thompson? And Mayor Diodati?
I'm in favor.
And that passes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to, thank you to everybody for being a part of that. Appreciate your involvement. We're going to move to reports. 7.1, Corporation of the City of Niagara Falls Consolidated Financial Statements. The recommendation is that we approve the 2019 statements. Motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you. Item 7.2, Tax-Supported Operating Fund 2020 Budget to Actual Variance Report. So this is the, the unaudited version and the recommendation is just for the information of council. Motion by Counselor Carrio, second by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? That's approved, thank you. Item 7.3, Encroachment Agreement with the City at 5731 Victoria Avenue. There are a few recommendations. The first one is that the city council determines, it's in the best interest of the public to do so, that Cana Banana be permitted to replace the existing partial encroachment and be allowed the continued use and maintenance of the new encroachment onto the city's laneway. And that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute and the city solicitor be authorized to register the encroachment. The recommendation is that we approve. Motion by Counselor Thompson, second by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Item 7.4, Center Street and Fallsview Boulevard Temporary Sidewalk Cafe Reinstallation. So I know we've got a conflict from Counselor Carrio. The recommendation from council is that we receive the report and direct staff to reinstall the temporary sidewalk cafes on Center Street, Fallsview Boulevard for the upcoming 2022 sidewalk cafe season, following the same principles, layouts and methods such as the concrete barriers as previously approved in 2021. And there is also a suggestion from our staff that perhaps we look at the idea of it being two years so that we can do a two-year pilot and then we can evaluate it through this coming year, which will be coming out of COVID. One regular year, we can come back and, and get a report from staff on the best way to go permanently forward. Okay, motion by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Strange.
I'll second it, I'd like to speak to it as well.
Okay, well, go ahead, you can speak to it, sure.
Thank you. We, we've gotten a lot of emails in the last couple of days and a lot, there's a few against, but a lot of them for this. And I think if, if we learned anything from what has happened in the last couple of years with COVID, I think it's less red tape for getting patios and whatnot for some of these restaurants because they are just in dire need of, of, of this. Because, you know, capacities were changing all the time. A lot of these restaurants, in particular, a couple on the Center Street, that's all they had was these patios. And, and that's why they're, they were just able to stay open and, and just surviving because of this. You know, we, we've seen it on Queen Street. And I always said, you know, I love Europe because, you know, there's a lot of walking streets, a lot of places where you can go out in little piazzas. And it's great for business. The more walking, I think is, is better for businesses. You know, you get to slow down and stuff. And if, if I could, believe me, all of Victoria and Clifton Hill, if I can make that a whole walking street, I would love to do that. And more foot traffic down there. It's, it's helping these, these people. We've heard from a couple of the businesses and, and because of what we did last year, that made them get through the year. Because they were just, when they were open, allowed to be open outside, they were jam-packed. And we, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money on this. And, you know, with stuff coming up like the Canada Summer Games, and that's something that we totally need. You know, we're getting, you know, thousands of families supporting the young athletes that are coming to the Niagara region. And you know they're all going to come down to Niagara. And you know they're going to be going down to the Queen Street, Walking Street. And you know they're going to go down to the patios. And, and they should be opening up patios everywhere. And I think there's, we need less red tape when it comes to that because... And, and I think there's, we need less red tape when it comes to that because this is a way, and you, like I said, you saw it in Europe, this is a way that restaurants were able to survive the last couple of years. So I'm in great, great support of this. And I think it's going to be great for those businesses and in long term, and I, I'll second that motion for the, for the two years as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Dubrowski?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to speak to it quickly. I, I've struggled with this one for a bit. I sit on the Victoria Center BIA, and I know there was a little bit of opposition from the BIA on this one, but typically when we have a staff report come in front of us, the BIA supports it. And we have a BIA that's not supporting this one, so kind of at odds with it, but at the same time, we're not a typical year. I received, probably like Counsel Strange just mentioned, 100 emails, phone calls. And thankfully for social media, social media allows our residents to reach out to us in a timely manner and effective manner. And I heard the same thing from everybody that had reached out to me, whether it be a small business owner that is going through economic struggles, or employees that simply want to get back to, to work, and residents who enjoyed the Center Street atmosphere and the Center Street vibe. So it's critical that we continue to plan as a municipality strategically, come up with creative ideas, and, and we've done an amazing job at that in pivoting through the last two years. And I, I think it's important as a municipality as well, we give the small businesses the tools necessary to make sure that they succeed, especially as we moved into our peak economic season. So again, you know, I could see both sides, I could see the BIA side, but at the same time, most importantly, the community needs this. They, they need it for mental health, for, for enjoying the atmosphere like they did on, on Center Street last year. The employees need it, they need to get back to work, they need to get those tips back, and, and the businesses need it as well. So anyway, I'm, I'm in support of the report in front of us. You know, it was a, a long struggle for me to, to come to that decision on, on my behalf, and I'm only one vote here, and I'm not sure it would make a difference either way. But either way, hope that all of these businesses get back to normal. And this is something, you know, small that might mean something big for them this summer.
Thank you for that. Yeah, did you, to that point?
Yeah, and I, yes, and I forgot to mention that, you know, the one owner had to hire six more staff because they were so busy during that time when they had the patio. So we're really, really helping, you know, people getting back to work as well.
Thank you for that. I got Counsel, yes, to that point?
I can go after, I just have one more point to make off the, one of the BIA requests.
Okay, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one was very difficult. You can see all of the, the challenges that businesses have had. I think this is a two-pronged issue. One, we've approved the patios till December 2022. That's all across the city. This one specifically is to move the patios out a little further and block Center Street that it's only going one way. So this is a little bit different. It's not that we're changing everything for all patios, this is just specifically Center Street. I know we've received hundreds of emails. A lot of them are customers and residents, not many business owners. The BIA is opposed to it, and so is LaCoco. And I know this council has said before that we shouldn't be involved in BIA business, that we should support the BIAs. This BIA, and I thought Mr. Parker was going to be online to speak, is he here? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll come back after Mr. Parker speaks if I can, because I'd like him to speak.
Well, did you want, you don't, you don't have any more to say? You want to wait till after he's done?
I, I've pretty much covered it. It's just the BIA that we, that we should put faith in, they talk to their members, they have, have said that they do not want it. I did ask Mr. Parker if they did do a survey. I know our staff said that there were no significant concerns, but do we know that? Like, I think we need to do a, a real survey, but the BIA represents those members. And if the BIA is saying, no, I can't understand why we've, we've supported certain BIAs and not other BIAs. So I would like to hear from the BIA.
Okay, before we go to our guest speaker, we, Counsel Dubrowski, you had another comment you wanted to make?
No, ju- just to that point, I, I actually forget my point, but it's been an exhausting and grueling two years of this pandemic. There's been peaks and valleys for businesses through provincially driven lockdowns and, and mandates and not allowing these businesses to open. I can see exactly what Counsel LaCoco's saying. And I, I can understand the BIA's position, but the one way was a compromise, it was the greater the good. I, I think all stakeholders involved will benefit from it, one way or another. We're, we're continuing that flow of traffic. At the same time, we're, we're letting those restaurants increase their capacity. And, you know, hope for the best, but who knows what can happen in the future. But either way, we're setting them up for success by doing this, and it, it will help the whole area, and that's my opinion. And again, I, in full support of the BIA, it's a decision that we're making on behalf of the council, and hopefully it's a, a decision that affects everybody positively, and that's my hope.
For me, what you said, the key word was compromise. The first year, we closed both lanes down, the BIA objected, we met them halfway, and we closed, made it one way. To me, that's compromise, that's what it's all about. So if, is, there's any, any other comments of, of council before we go to Mr. Parker? Okay, so is he, is he on the line, Mr. Oatley? Mr. Parker, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Mayor Diodati.
Yep, welcome to the meeting.
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight, you and council, appreciate it. A couple of quick things I just want to mention that were not in the letter that, that the BIA sent over. I didn't realize that your staff report was, this, this particular deal was for two years, I thought it was just for this year. Didn't realize it was 2023 as well, so really not seeing that one in the staff report, I must have missed it. I also want to, you know, thank the staff for doing the report, and, and the author of the report speaks to that there were no problems or conditions or, or headaches during last year's trial period with the one-way street. And as much as I want to say that, I'm not sure if you checked with the bylaw officers or looked into the, into that situation, but there were many, many, many times that the businesses were, were upset with the fact that there were delivery trucks that were parked in the one-way street for a long period of time blocking traffic. There were cars that were stopped to use the cannabis store and blocking the one-way street. I don't know if bylaw was out there or not, but I know that just because it's not a report doesn't mean it didn't happen. There was also many times pedestrians thought it was a closed street. People don't read signs very well, and walked down the streets and got caught between the two concrete barriers and thus, you know, something could have happened. And I don't think we want to wait until there's a fatality before we have a statistic saying that, you know, it was unsafe. The BIA is, is not against patios at all. The BIA is all about being fair for all of its membership. And we've got many members in the area that would love to close all of Victoria Avenue, as, as Counsel Strange said, and other areas to put out patios as well. It's just not conducive with the amount of traffic that we get down there, as you all know. I think this year will be a very busy year. We're hoping that there's no more COVID problems and shutting down of restaurants. Every restaurant right now has the same capabilities of restaurants on Center Street as far as 50% availability, that they can sit inside. But it's just not conducive for, for Clifton Hill area and Victoria Center BIA to have closed streets just because of the amount of traffic. It's not Europe, it's Niagara Falls, and we get over, you know, five or six or seven or eight or nine million people a year. And if we don't have streets for those pedestrians to move on in their vehicles and move things around, it just doesn't happen. So, so we, we are concerned about that. We did do the pilot project, we did compromise last year, as, as you all suggested. There are two BIAs right now that are, are not happy with closing the street again because of all the reasons we said. So those are our reasons. We all, the last reason is there was other shop owners on Center Street that have attractions, tattoo parlors, or other attractions, or other businesses that are not restaurants. And it's not fair to them that the traffic flow is being hindered as well. Last year, they had a big problem with, with using their storefronts because of the fact that the patios really interfered with the, the flow of traffic down that street. So we have to be fair to all of our businesses, not just the restaurants. We have to be business, we have to be mindful of the other businesses on that street. So those are our reasons, and I hope council could take all that in and, and make the proper decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Parker. Appreciate that. Okay, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just want to say that, I mean, supporting the outdoor patios, not just on Center Street, but right across the city, I think is very easy to do. When council first made the decision to shut Center Street down, I think we heard from a lot of the businesses in the area that, oh, this really changed things, you know, this isn't good for us. So we did come to a compromise, as you mentioned, and we opened it one way. And so far, you know, the traffic heading north on, on Clifton Hill and going through Center Street that way, hasn't really affected a lot of people. If it has, we really haven't heard from them. A couple of questions that I have, Your Worship, is, one is, in regards to the two-year period, what's going to be our, what's going to be our aim at the end of that? Are we going to be looking at doing some type of streetscaping? Are we going to be analyzing the situation so that maybe there are permanent changes that are made? Or maybe there are not going to be permanent changes? I mean, I know that, you know, in recent years, Victoria Avenue has come down and said, you know, we would like different streetscaping. City supported them, you know, we invested a lot of money in changing the streets, the streetscaping on Victorious, on Victoria Avenue and streets around there. You know, the Clifton Hill BIA recently came down and said, you know what, we don't like the parking here. We would love it if our sidewalks could be widened, you know, so that we could accommodate the foot traffic that we have. And we did. I mean, it cost us money to, or I, I guess it would be an opportunity cost in revenue to actually take that parking out and widen those sidewalks. So we do try to listen to the businesses, we do try to help them. So my point, Your Worship, is that if this motion is approved, we now have a two-year window where we can analyze the situation and make recommendations for the future. Or is this just going to keep coming back as sort of an annual request or a biannual request? That would be the question that I have. I mean, I, I would like to see us actually use the time to analyze the situation so that we can come back with recommendations for the future.
You want to make a friendly amendment if, if the movers were open to it? And, and so you're suggesting come back with, with some study and, and thoughts on future, the future of this, is that what you're saying?
I like the idea of the one-way, Your Worship, I really do. I, I don't like the idea of the jogging in and out. I would think it would be a much nicer, more pedestrian-friendly if the actual curbs were brought out and it was only one single lane of traffic.
Widen the sidewalks.
Exactly. And, and this way, every business owner on both sides of the street, every single one would enjoy a wider, would enjoy a wider sidewalk. That, that would be a thought that I'd like to put out there. So, and, and if this motion is approved, we then have a bit of time to actually study what the traffic patterns are. You know, I'm sure our staff can do some, some technical analysis of how well traffic flows through this system here. So I would hope that at the end of this two-year period, we would have some pretty solid recommendations and some good data to back it up.
So that's great, so.
That's a friendly suggestion, Your Worship?
Is, is the mover open to that? Yes, it is? And then the secondor, you're good with that too? Yes? Okay, great. The CAO would like to weigh in on that?
Yep. And then I have one more point.
Yeah, thank you. If, if it's okay to the mover and the secondor and the, and the council, I would say that, that staff come back with a formal study to include the observations and also best practices found in other communities. Because what we are seeing is trends in other communities where you look for more, you know, pedestrian-friendly areas such as this moving forward. So, and that's why when there were some questions, the two-year period made more sense. Instead of coming back on an annual basis, we can actually do a more formal study that way. So I think if it's included as a formal study, staff will take that away. Thank you.
You want, you have got more points?
Yeah, Your Worship, the other, the other thing I just wanted to mention, we, we, we did late in the day today get a, a letter from a business owner who I believe is right next to one of the establishments that has a patio. I, I just, I just want to point out that the, the person who wrote the letter said, listen, I am not opposed to the patios, but they do have some legitimate concern. So if, if, if staff don't have that letter yet, perhaps we can just pass that over to staff, and then we can let staff work through the, whatever's in the letter, Your Worship. Does that make sense? I just don't want to identify the individual because I don't think that they want to be identified. But I, I think they're minor problems that can easily be solved with a little bit of logistics. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll call the vote then. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, one opposed and one conflict. Got that, Mr. Clerk? Okay, 7.5. Fourth Avenue Draft Plan of Standard Condominium. There are four recommendations. First, that the plan of condominiums for land known as 4263 Fourth Avenue be draft-approved, subject to conditions in Appendix A. Two, that the mayor be designated to authorize and sign the draft plan. Three, the draft approval be given for three years, after which approval will lapse unless an extension is requested by the developer and granted by the council. And four, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the condominium agreement and any required documents to allow for the future registration of the condominium. Yes? Okay, motion moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Okay, and we've got two speakers as well. Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Cushman continues to write letters to us, and he's terribly frightened of the chemicals in the soil. Do we have any indication of, of studies that have been done with respect to, is it safe to actually build on this property?
Okay, good question.
Do we have anything?
Okay, maybe we can go to Ms. Dolch if she can help us answer that?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to the council. We do have studies, so there was a Phase 1 and 2 environmental site assessment prepared by WSP. That assessment was sent to the Ministry of Environment, and the ministry has issued a record of site condition for residential development. So it has been approved by the ministry.
So we have a record of site condition? Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing, oh, we've got speakers, I'm sorry. So who do we have? Oh, it's on the list. Okay, Mr. Cushman? Are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Welcome to the meeting. We, you've got an opportunity to address council, and we just ask you, if you could, keep your comments within five minutes, please.
Okay, I will do my best. My system's glitching out a little, so if you can't hear me, I did email you this, this letter that I'm reading right now, okay?
Okay, okay, that sounds great, thank you.
So my, my name's Mike Cushman, and I became an, along with three generations of cancer, took three members of my family, and my sister lost her, both her breasts from cancer. I grew up in an industrial neighborhood called Silvertown, and I learned that the Niagara Region Department ordered air monitoring tests for the big polluting companies in 1992, and they did air monitoring of the Niagara region, knowing there is huge health problems in the Niagara region, air pollution, buried ground pollution. Air monitoring phyto-toxics, cluttering wetlands studies. The Niagara River Toxic Committee, by 1979, the International Joint Committee had already placed the Niagara River on a list of the 42 of the most heavily polluted waters in the entire Great Lake basin. Niagara, dressed tourist town on Ontario's side of the river were frequently found in the community center expressing their fears that their drink water drawn from the river's mouth would be poisoned by the millions of liters of treated chemical wastes firm upstream. On the American side of the river in Niagara Falls, New York, there was a headline after headline about a neighborhood called Love Canal where a mystery oily substance from nearby dumped news out through the ground and turned the American dream into a nightmare for hundreds of working-class families. It was as if a strange blight that crept over the area described 17 years earlier by Rachel Carlson in her book Silent Spring was now coming to pass in and around the world's most majestic waterways. Also in 1979, a milestone document released by the Integrity Task Force on Niagara and Erie counties in Niagara Falls, New York revealed that in more than 200 dump sites on the American side of the river, millions of tons of hazardous waste were lingering in the ground. And two of these dump Love Canal and the Mammoth Hide Park site on Niagara Falls, New York were found to be soaked in oxygen and high-oxygen discovered by accumulating in the flesh of the Ontario fish. It was found by the NRPC, the Cyanimic Property was releasing pesticides, durens, and dioxins into the Rio Hydrogel and St. Peter's Strait, the same period's area gorge. Fast forward today, and we see environmental policy is being thrown out the window. Risk assessments and, and record of site conditions are done by consultants that work for and are hired by the polluting companies that want to develop. These gold rushes of real estate, and instead of taking the opportunity to correct a huge wrong done to the people of Niagara Falls. wrong done to the people of Niagara Falls, the council approves building a housing project on a very poisonous piece of land. Record of site condition and a new risk assessment, ignore all the old studies done, which, by the way, were done on this property without doing any cleanup at all. The Niagara River Toxic Committee, Gardner and Lee Can'tox Report, NCPA Studies, Ryerson Studies, MOE on tar pitch and tar pitch waste, all stated waters from this gorge and the bedrock and Shipewa Power Canal and the cyanimids themselves all said, do not disturb the property encapped with clay and vegetation. Because real estate is cold rush, the MECP City Council and the regional...
Please go ahead.
...real estate process than environmental protections which protect our health. The new housing project on the old YMCA is Love Canal Number Two. The studies you are entrusting, 154 samples, and everything is good. Me, you, and you, we found disturbing things. If you'd bore samples and testing for the right things, you would have found this. First, in a whole dug on the property, we found tar pitch oozing out of the south wall on the whole U-dug. This is very disturbing. It's waste, and a woman in Pendle People's reported to you at another meeting on the YMCA property that she found tar pitch on the north end of the property. The cyanimid property, so very north, the very northeastern corner of the property, the cyanimid property had tar pitch oozing out of a dug there. Second visit, we saw standing water in another hole dug with a couple... Within a couple weeks later, and the water was bubbling on a hot summer day. This is called offgassing and is a chemical reaction to many chemicals in the soil. You add glycol to this, because recently you had a leak at the arena where you had to replace the glycol system, and I never read of remediation done on this property. It is a mere 25 meters away from the housing project. One has to wonder if the acidity in the soil laid away the joint from the glycol systems on this land and cyanide, ammonia, nitrate, 100 years of emissions and dust from the processes, and tar pitch, tar pitch waste, coal, coke, lime, and whatever else they produced in World War II. Every time I speak with the city on the issues of contamination on this MECP. Ontario's Auditor General report in November 2021, that concluded serious shortcomings by the MECP and its ability to protect citizens from the health and environmental hazards. In conjunction with the Auditor General's report and all the old inclusion that the best idea to cap the area with cake to stop the water from this property from draining into the river, he has three natural or weeds that were filled with cyanimid waste on Ontario hydrocell and the St. David's Bay Gorge. Also included the fact that the city council decided to contaminate a property without doing a cleanup underneath it. I urge you to stop this housing project. I know you inherited a mess. You are not... Is there any way that you guys could get more funding from the region? Federal government to clean properties up before reuse? This would be corrected, high savings that would happen in healthcare, and it would justify the cost that it costs to clean the property up. If you continue to do this, I will be fighting this, and I will inform the people that live on the property what they are living on. I will inform these people, go to court law, call ultra-hazardous activity, and the problem with this is, we have to wait for the people and the families to sue you. I figure it'll take about a month for their sense of smell to go, and then all downhill from there with their health problem. I really hope you consider not doing this, because this is going to be a disaster, and many people will die from these decisions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Cushman. Thank you for your comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Cushman. Thank you for your comments. And do we have another speaker as well? Okay, Gary Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, you've got the floor for the next five minutes.
You know, in 1983, and what Wayne Campbell just said, brought a lot of light into my life. In 1983, I was driving rail cars up and down that street, you know? Up from Stanley Avenue Cemetery all the way down to the Parkway, down behind Cyanide. Dumping cyanide, cyanide. And we contaminated that land like crazy. So if you guys think that building on that contaminated land is fine, then that's great. That's your decision. But at the end of the day, I was an employee of Cyanide from 1983. I left there in 1992, I think, and I think I was the 17th person that Wayne Thompson, sitting right beside you, Jim, shook his hand and said, well, I'm sorry about your job. We dumped more cyanide on that friggin' land than you can ever imagine. We used to friggin' blow roadie out of the sky on a dump from the cyanide. Don't build on that land, guys. That's just silly. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Is that yes, Counsel LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that Ms. Dolch said that there have been Phase One and Phase Two studies done by WSP for the site condition, and it's been approved by the ministry for residential to live there. Now, the Gale Center was only dug down so far, and we could only build a recreational facility, not residential. The Gale Center is abutting this land, so I'm trying to think about what we could do. I know in certain instances for industrial, when we're building development near industrial, we put something on the title that makes the purchaser aware that they are close to industrial and that they can't have any claims of noise, smell, that sort of thing. I'm wondering if something can be put on title to make the purchasers aware that this was contaminated land, probably still is contaminated land, even though it's been dug out for so many inches or feet, and it has been approved by the MTO, there's still contamination underneath that. So I'm suggesting, and I don't know how to go about this, can we have something put on title so when people are purchasing it, they know of what has been done, what the MTO has approved, what the environmentalists have approved, at least they will be aware of it?
Okay, so maybe we can get Ms. Dolch to answer. Maybe our legal may want to weigh in as well. Yeah, Ms. Dolch?
Thank you, Your Worship. Actually, I was just going to suggest that, and I hate to put our new lawyer on the spot, but I think it's more of a legal question whether we can add something like that in, given the fact that the ministry has cleared it for residential use.
Okay, okay, so maybe if our legal team is available, are you guys... Are they online there? Yes. Nidi? Oh, there we go.
Yes, we are. I'm just... I was figuring out the mute button. Sorry.
No problem. So the question, I guess, is in regard to this property, can we put on title, you know, can we put on title that at one time it was contaminated, or these types of things? Or is that a ministry thing? I don't know. So the question from the counselor.
So that type of information doesn't go directly on title?
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So what is different when we're selling, when we're approving a development near an industrial site, and we put something on title that they're aware of the noise and the smell? How is that any different than this, that we were able to do that and we can't do this?
Ms... Nidi?
Sure. Just in terms of the information that's registered on title, like, to my knowledge, that wouldn't be registered. But Ed, do you have any further?
Sure. I don't know if you can see me or hear me.
Yeah, we hear you and we see you.
Do you see me?
And we hear you, yes.
Oh, good. Okay. You're looking really good, Your Worship, actually.
Get your eyes checked.
Yeah, so the registry system doesn't allow people to just easily put things on title. It used to be back in the day that you could get a lot of things registered on title, and there were provisions that allowed you to put various things on title, warning provisions and that kind of thing. But that's not the case anymore. So we're restricted in what we can put on title as a warning by virtue of conditions that are imposed by the ministry. So for example, in the conditions that subdivisions often have where there's noise potential, you know, we can register on title agreements that, you know, include provisions that owners are to be given notice of certain things. And that's how we achieve, you know, that kind of both control and that kind of notice. But what's being suggested here, I don't think fits into that category. I understand why the counselor would want to, you know, put the people on notice, but I just don't think that that fits into, you know, the area that we can actually get things registered and provide that kind of notice.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Counsel.
I know with this property, it didn't come to a planning meeting because there was a bylaw amendment, so it didn't really go through the regular planning process, and maybe those things could have been addressed at that point. But because it went through a bylaw amendment, it just went through as a report. Is there a way that we can speak with the developer? If all of the paperwork is in order and the ministry says that everything's fine, could we speak with the developer to get it registered? We are responsible for, as a community, as city councillors, for this piece of property, and I know we have paperwork saying it's fine, but realistically, there's only so much dirt that's been removed. There's contaminants underneath it, and there's contaminants beside it. And if we're not going to stop the development, can we do something to at least make people aware?
Again, we'll go back to our legal team if... And/or, okay, Ms. Dolch has got her hand up. So did you want to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Your Worship, and I am going to work for legal stuff as well, just to make sure they're comfortable with it. But I think what we can do is add a condition in the condo, just to put an acknowledgement that the record of site condition was done and that, you know, where to find the information on the record of site condition at the ministry.
Okay.
If that helps.
And legally, does our legal team concur?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yes.
Okay, good. Good suggestion. Yep, that's fair.
Thank you, that's better than nothing. And I know we've already approved to build there, so I just wanted to make people aware. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, is there any other questions or comments of council? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, one opposed? Okay, thank you for that. 7.6. Request for removal of part lot control. Recommendation that council approve the request and pass the bylaw tonight. Motion by Counsel Cario, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. 7.7. Additional capital funding for the purchase of three conventional transit buses. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Consent agenda, what's the will of council?
I have a conflict on moving it.
Okay, motion, Counsel Brodsky has a conflict on which one?
8.4.
Okay, with that noted, motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Cario, that we move the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you. Oh, yes, and our CAO would like to weigh in, please?
Yeah, so specifically on item 8.4, just want to notify council that we'll go ahead with the brokerage, but we will delay it by 30 to 60 days as there may be a different opportunity for that piece of property. And if there is, we'll report that back to council, but we'll keep that broker approved to move forward.
Do you need any amendment from us for that, or no, you're good?
I don't want to move it.
Okay, so we're all aware. Item nine, communications and comments to city clerk. 9.1, rather. Project Share, Meridian, Coldest Night of the Year correspondent. Yes, go ahead, Counsel LaCoco.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring awareness that it's a virtual walk held on February the 26th. It's safe COVID-friendly that you would be walking in your own neighborhood. It's not a community walk like it was before. It's to raise awareness about housing and support vulnerable families. It's also to bring awareness to the food insecurity, and I can put out a challenge to the council if they would like to walk and put a team together or sponsor someone else.
Okay, and I know also Counsel Strange and Peter Angelo have been... Pardon me? Oh, do we have the video? We have the video, I believe.
We're not aware of the video?
No? From Tiana, she didn't give you the video? She was supposed to give it to you.
We'll put it on social media.
Yeah, yeah, we will. No, no, we just... She was just playing it for us. She didn't send it to you, though? Okay.
You want to reenact it?
No.
You got snowballs or...
Okay, so we'll come back to that. Okay, so Counsel LaCoco, so are you... So you put out the... So we did a video, just so you know.
Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, we did it last week, myself, Counsel Peter Angelo, Counsel Strange, been doing this walk for a long time, so we did a video to promote it on social media, and I think they're launching it tomorrow. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll see it tomorrow.
I'm the council rep on Project Share, and I saw it on the agenda, so I wanted to promote it.
Okay, great. So is there a motion here? What do you have there?
Move recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, Mr....
Is that the recommendation from 9.1 to 9.11?
Okay. Well, our clerk's going to speak up. Hold on one sec.
Okay, so let's just back up a moment. I sent an email to everyone, and as you can see on the agenda here tonight, under the communications section on number nine, what we've tried to do here as staff is we've tried to lay out the communications section similar to the consent agenda. We've seen that push from council in the past, where councillors have made motions to make approvals in lump segments. We've continued to list all of the topics, so that if a councillor wants to pull something from the agenda, much like what Counsel LaCoco had just done, to draw attention to a particular matter, that can certainly be done. But it also gives council an option if they want to do a lump recommendation. So for example, what you're used to seeing is under 9.1, there would be a recommendation. Under 9.2, another separate recommendation, and so on, so forth. You can see tonight that the recommendation is listed prior to 9.1, and there's an option there, since all of these items on tonight's agenda are listed for information, you could lump them in altogether, one at a time, a few at a time, whatever the council wishes. Also, in the future, if there is a recommendation, say for example, to refer to staff, we will lump those communications separately. It's just a will and a desire that we've had from a few members, and the options are laid out there for council's discretion.
Okay, so everybody sees a little way to streamline the council meeting. Yes, Counsel Cario?
Yeah, I have that, Your Worship. I'll move the recommendation. I have one on that.
He had his hand up. Okay.
I had that for five minutes. I'll second it.
Okay, okay, then you make the motion?
For what?
I thought you wanted to move the correspondence. Is that what you wanted to move, or you wanted to speak to it?
No.
Wanted to speak about the Project Share.
The Coldest Night of the Year?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't want to talk about that. I want to... I got a letter, email, I think everybody's got...
Oh, yeah, okay.
About reducing their commitment from the city of Niagara Falls. And they mentioned in there, 30 years ago, when I was there, we created...
Yep.
It wasn't Project Share, Coordinated Home Services. And it was created not because we got situation like we have now, homeless, hungry people, It was because I came... It was because I came here from the Health Department. And I was out there all the time, going to private homes. Complaints from schoolteachers and other people in the community about kids were not being looked after, being fed. And you go in there and disastrous situation. So it was important then, but it's even more important now. And I want to have a, I wanted to do it during the coldest night to say, we're not going to reduce the money from the city to Project Share.
Okay.
Make that motion. They're very upset.
Yeah. Okay, well, how would we handle this? I need a little bit of guidance on this. So it's, mister clerk?
Well, this is totally separate from the topic that is on the agenda here for communications. We've been trying to steer this council into following the procedural bylaw for notice of motion. We could waive that, those rules, and you can entertain the motion now. This is something that's traditionally brought up under new business. Again, we're trying to steer away from that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's just get the correspondence received. And then we'll just do it because then we're almost at new business. And then we can make your motion. Okay? So we just, right after we get, we're going to do this. And then we'll do in camera and then we'll do for new business. We're almost there. We're a few minutes away.
Okay, 9.7, I want to talk about too.
9.7? What one? We pulled 9.1? Okay. Motion by councillor, yeah, councillor LaCoco, second by councillor Peter Angelo. You'll sponsor councillor LaCoco? Wow, 100 bucks?
Wow, thank you.
From Mr. Big Box.
Thank you, mister CAO.
I heard a clapping in the back room from KJ.
But she's got to walk it, that's all.
That's fine.
Does she have to do anything special? No, just walk? Okay, okay.
I'm also going to Project Share to sit out with, what's the gentleman's name, Mark Cutbert? He sits outside for 12 hours in front of Project Share. And you got an email. I don't know, a while ago, somebody from the mayor's office might come. But I also said I would go as a council rep.
Okay, yeah. I think that's what they said, that you were going as our council rep.
But they didn't get back to me to confirm that.
Oh, okay.
I was going anyway, but I didn't know if I was going.
Yeah, you are, because actually I talked to Sarah about that. So you are, so I don't know where the breakdown was, but yeah, 100%.
That's fine. So after that, when I know that the, all of them were to go together, I wanted to pull 9.2 and.
Okay, well, let's just vote on 9.1 then. So all those in favor? Okay, so 9.2, regional correspondence. So why don't we just deal with it? Let's just deal with the ones you want and then we'll do the rest.
I asked our clerk to pull up the page, page five on the report. It's about every other garbage, every other week garbage. I know our residents were really concerned when we moved to every other week. And I wanted to bring the attention to the residents that garbage went down 17.6% by going to every other week. And organics went up 22.7%. That's amazing. More people are composting. And recycling went up 9.7. So I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention because I think we're doing very well. Even though people didn't like the idea at the beginning, I think it is working out. There are a few bumps in the road where there are some garbage placed in places where it shouldn't be. But I think in general, it's working out.
The big complaint I'm getting is a lot more rats now. I'm getting a lot of calls about rats. So it's upside and downside, right? It's a trade-off. But I agree, more garbage is, or less garbage and more compost, which is great. But I am getting a lot of calls about what are we going to do about the rat problem?
Okay.
So we are dealing with that. We're getting a lot of calls, yeah.
And then the other one under the region, it was the Community Homelessness Prevention Initiative. There's, you don't have to bring that up, but there's, it talks about addressing the funding inadequacies for the Niagara region that we receive from the province. And the region hasn't received an increase from 2020 and 2021, 2021, 22, or 22, 2023. And this goes back to the conversation that we had last time. Councillor Thompson was just speaking about Project Share and reducing six of the granting funding and saying, go to the region. The region doesn't have any money either, so I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, it's been an inequity situation forever and they've been fighting for it forever. And I don't, I know, it's frustrating.
I met with councillor Jugley and MP.
Commissioner?
Yes, and commissioner Jugley and MP.
Cousin?
Oosterhoff. And we were trying to talk to them about the inequities. So years ago, people were given money, municipalities were given money for homelessness. And when there were increases, they would give, you know, an extra $100,000, an extra $200,000. But it wasn't proportionate. So if you look at the Niagara region, we're getting these small increases, but we're not getting proportionate to what we should be. We should be getting different percentages, not just 100,000, 200,000, 700,000. And there is a huge, huge discrepancy there. So they don't have money. So I just want to make sure that we know they don't have money. So we can't say to our organizations, go, go to them. Thank you.
Oh, fair enough. Did you have another one councillor that you, no? Okay, and councillor Thompson, it was 9.7, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, floor is yours?
Yes, this is about the OLT, Ontario Land Tribunal. And I had an email and a call with Ken Withuse about this. And he said, we got to change the OLT. I don't think it would be beneficial to put our name there to cut it out because that's not going to happen. It would be another name, maybe. But the River Road property that we all voted against again, I think there was only one in favor of the seven-story, initially was approved by this council. And then after they came in and they got, they're moving through the process with 29 stories. And it wasn't even mentioned in the discussion. He was participating in that with the government. And they never mentioned that the council didn't. So I think it would be appropriate to refer this matter to the mayor and the Mr. Burgess and respond that this is important when the council make a decision with respect to a development. And it should be taken into serious matter. So I just suggest that.
Okay, thank you. To that same point councillor, yes?
This was the other one I wanted to speak on, but I knew that councillor Thompson was pulling it. I'm very torn about this. The Ontario Land Tribunal. It seems that the provincial government, they appoint the Ontario Land Tribunal. So if the provincial government is pro-development or pro-environment or let's say tree canopies or intensification, whatever the provincial government is, that's what the OLT or LPAD or OMB, whatever we've called it over the years. We need housing options and we need development. And I think that having the OLT, if it's done right, could be very transparent for residents that if there is an issue at your city council, that there is a third party overlooking it. But what's happening now is the provincial government says we're pro-pro-pro-development. So if we don't approve something, the developer goes there and they're going to get what they want as long as it's in the guidelines. So I'm really torn about this and I don't, I don't want to see it ended. I think it should be changed, that there is more transparency, accountability, and different type of guidelines, especially for our area with the green space that we have left. We don't want to, for all of it to go to development. So I'm really not sure, but if the motion is to refer it to staff to bring more information, I'll approve that.
So is, well, you didn't actually make a motion. Do you want to refer this to?
Yes, made a motion.
Okay, all right. So a motion that we just refer that 7.9? Okay, okay. Well, councillor LaCoco already seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, no, it's all good. So we'll just refer that to staff. Okay, so we've got the motion. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. All right, thank you. Yep, motion by councillor Kerrio, second by councillor Dubrowski. We move the rest of the correspondence. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on, ratification of in camera, mister clerk?
The ratification of this afternoon's in camera meeting is that direction be given to staff regarding the possible purchase of various properties.
Motion to approve the ratification of in camera. Councillor Dubrowski, second by councillor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. And then notice of motion? What do we have here, mister clerk? Do we have a notice of motion here?
Hey, worship, the first notice of motion is being put forward by councillor LaCoco. It may be appropriate for her to speak to it.
Okay, yeah, councillor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't prepare a long speech on this because I know we're not debating it. But what it boils down to is giving residents more notification and expanded outside of the 250 meters for planning matters.
Okay.
That's basically what it boils down to.
Okay, and do we have any feedback from our planners? Or have you talked to our planners already on this?
Yes, I spoke with Ms. Dolch and she helped me craft the notice of motion and said that they could, the motion is to refer it to staff for them to bring back a report.
Great. Okay, so motion by councillor LaCoco. Do you have a seconder? Do you have a seconder? Okay, councillor Kerrio?
Report.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Yep. So we'll just call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. And then we've got a motion, adopt a hydrant program, brought forward by councillor Strange. Did you want to speak to that councillor?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor. Just this year in particular, we've really had an over, I don't know, capacity of snow where we couldn't even get, you know, snowplows have been stuck. The first snowfall and then the second one, they actually did a really amazing job. When you're outside and you're going down the sidewalks, you see all these fire hydrants that are just packed full of snow. And I've got a couple of emails, I've seen some posts on social media about, you know, what the city workers are doing. We got to get rid of all this snow. And it's almost impossible. I know a lot of the workers from the water department try to clear it out, but when you can't even get, it's almost impossible. So I was trying to look for something that, you know, might remedy this or help them out, especially when you've got a heavy snowfall. And there's a couple municipalities in Canada, Strathmore and Corner Brook and a few other ones that do this adopt a hydrant program where you actually adopt that hydrant, like an adopt a street. And you can, I think you actually can name it. But you take care, make sure, I think it's like a two-meter radius around the fire hydrant. The most important thing is that the firefighters can get there and not have to wait to plug their hoses into the hydrants and save lives, whether it's a car accident, a fire on the street, or a house. And I don't know if, I don't even know the kilometers or how many fire hydrants we may have. And I know Eric's here and James Seek, I don't know if he's online too. And I was talking to the chief as well and possibly bring back a report. And it may not be till next year, but something that may help and might be a cool thing, you know, for even high school kids to get their community hours where they just kind of make sure those hydrants are clear for the full year. And maybe we could do some prizes at the end of the year where some, you know, some kids are putting their names on or future firefighters, you know, give them a firefighter hat or the chief comes and with the fire truck or something really cool. And I don't even know how many fire hydrants we do have. And Eric or James might be able to weigh in on that if they're online.
Yeah, we, mister Nickel, did you want to weigh in on how many we have and the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great motion. We have 3,000 hydrants plus in our city. So there's lots of opportunity for the residents, community and their youth to pitch in.
That's amazing. And I've seen on a couple and benchmarking from other municipalities where they actually have an app where they can control. And you can go on and you can adopt it, put your naming rights on it and stuff like that. So I think it's something really cool and kids can get involved, high school students with community hours or like I said, prizes at the end of the year. And the most important thing is to get those first responders and the firefighters to those hydrants so they can do their job. So I just wanted to make that motion.
Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Peter Angelo. And I'm guessing it's now that you have a dog, you've paid more attention to fire hydrants?
I want a name when a fire hydrant's offered.
You knew there was three for sure, not 3,000.
I might have to clean up that one.
Okay. You heard the motion. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. The bylaws? Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Dubrowski. The bylaws be given a first, second and third reading. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you for that. New business. Councillor Strange, Kerrio? What, Thompson?
Just a real quick one and congratulations to our Canadian athletes right now at the Winter Olympics in China, whether you believe they should be going or participating or whatever. They're doing an amazing job. And I watched the women's hockey last night. And the unbelievable story is this guy from Quebec, Max Perot, who's a snowboarder. And he competed in the last Olympics, won a medal. And then he ended up getting diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. And he was out for a while. They didn't know what was going to happen if he ever be able to compete again. He went through his 12 cycles of chemotherapy and he just won the gold medal. And I know you got the Niagara Falls to light up red for them. Actually, I think it's right now, 8 to 8:50.
It is 8 to 8:50.
Yeah, so I just want to congratulate Max and Mark McMorris too, who won the bronze with him. So really excellent. Like it's a Cinderella story and I'm sure it'll be a movie in a few years with this guy, this kid did. So just very inspiring. And I'm glad that Niagara Falls supported and turned the falls red for these two guys.
And I just want to say, thanks for bringing the idea forward. That was a great idea because councillor Strange, we lit the falls up tonight. We were able to get it in in time. And you're right, he suffered Hodgkin's lymphoma and he went from terrible ravaged body to gold medal, world champion snowboarder. Amazing story. It's inspiring. So thanks for bringing that forward. Councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, worship. I'm assuming we're still in a state of emergency within the city. I've had some people ask me, what and when is the process or criteria for us to get out of it?
Mister somebody? Oh, good. Chief, fire chief, Chief Zambito, are you there? Oh, there he is. There's the handsome chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and through you the councillor. I'm saddened to report that it's been 102 weeks that we've been in this pandemic. And I believe all of us can say that we're exhausted and we can't wait till this is over. With regards to the state of emergency, I'll just take you back. The region, along with the 12 municipalities, back on April the 3rd in 2020, declared a state of an emergency. And we decided that we would approach this pandemic as one voice and one message. And there was a lot of initiatives that went along since then. But we will get direction from public health with regards to the status of many contributing factors. And one of them is our ability, our hospital system and our health system. And that will influence how we move towards getting out of this state of emergency.
So do we need a motion? Okay, to report, okay, so make it official? Or? A direction, okay. You good with that councillor Kerrio?
Because the person that was asking was asking what the end game is or what are the, like, not like some of the governments don't give you any facts or figures. They just shut you down, you know, that kind of thing. People really want to know what is determining factor for us to get out of it. So maybe we could get that in there.
Okay, great. So that'll come back? Okay, thank you. Great question. And thanks for the response, Chief Zambito. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I just want to make a motion that.
My, your microphone?
Make a motion and I send you, and I think you both got. Make a motion, and I send you, and I think you both got the, from Pam Sharp from Project Share, and I would like to get this off their back and say, we're not gonna do reduction of their funding to Project Share this year.
Okay, so we got that motion by Councilor Thompson?
Yes.
Yeah, for this year? No, it's not going up. Yes, Councilor LaCoco?
Mr. Mayor, last meeting, I brought this up, and it was suggested that it was a report that count, that, that staff would report back to council and have discussions with those six granting agencies and leave twenty twenty's funding alone. That's what we voted on last time. Sorry, twenty, sorry, I'm, twenty twenty-two, for twenty twenty-two, leave twenty-two, twenty twenty-two's granting there, and that the report would come back after staff have, have talked about it. So that this motion, which I completely agree, I would vote for it, but that's opposite to what we did last time.
Okay.
They're interested in getting this decision. We will look at the other funding things when it comes through, but I particularly am concerned about this.
Okay. Mr. C A O?
Yeah, through, through the charity council, so there is a report coming back. There is no cuts for twenty twenty-two. And any budgetary decisions for twenty twenty-three needs to be made within the twenty twenty-three budget decision, unless council overrules that. I think one of the key things that, as C A O, I'm gonna remind this council is any spending decisions that are made that impact a future budget need to be made during the budget meeting. If not, they have to specifically exempt themselves from that. So in this case, twenty twenty-two's fine, we will meet with the charities over the next, next few months, and then bring something back for budgetary discussions in twenty, in, in the fall or later this, like, later this spring. So the Project Share is fine for twenty twenty-two, there's no cuts.
Yeah, so there's no, this year, they know there's, there's nothing, they're not being touched this year in twenty twenty-two. And then we'll wait for this report, then we can decide on twenty twenty-three, right? And then you can bring the motion forward then, that we maintain the...
He can defer that to the budget, Councilor.
Yeah.
One of the considerations is if Councilor Thompson wants to, you know, he can make a motion and defer that motion to the twenty twenty-three budget meeting, that Project Share not get cut, and council can debate it at that time with all the other budget amendments at that point in time. And if councillors want to stay on the record, and that way, that, that way, it gets deferred to when you're actually making the budgetary decisions.
What's he deferring?
The, the, well, he'd be, he would be moving a motion to say, no cuts to Project Share in twenty twenty-three, and the motion would be deferred to the budget meeting at, at the appropriate time.
He's got to make the motion first, before it gets deferred. Okay, so that's, is that your motion then, Wayne? Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilor Thompson, excuse me, seconded by Councilor LaCoco, that...
I'm sorry, it's not a defer, it's a referral to the twenty twenty-three budget.
Referral, right.
Not a referral, it's a referral.
Yep, referral motion to the twenty twenty-three budget process, that there are no, be no decrease in the Project Share funding. Okay, that's the motion, seconded, all those in favor? Okay, that's approved unanimously. Another, yeah, Councilor Dubrowski? Okay. Yeah, I thought you were bringing something about skate rinks here, no, not, not, not now? Okay, any other new business? All right, and I just, last thing, I just want to say thank you to staff for decorating, getting things all nice for, for our clerk's birthday on Valentine's, and wish everybody happy Valentine's. Motion by Councilor Dubrowski to adjourn, thank you, seconded by Councilor Campbell. All those in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned. Great.